Welcome, everyone. I've called this meeting to order at 6:00 PM here in the committee of the whole room. Please, 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 just please.
Public Legion, unified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any location on the wall?
Yes.
Roll call, please. All the members.
Ah, present.
Fred.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Monsieur.
Present.
When?
Present.
Daniel?
Present.
Where?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Um, any remote electronic attendance? None today. Public comment. That's Juanita, come, please come to the floor. I'm right here. Oh, there is a microphone, but if you would just say your name to us.
Okay, uh, my name is Juanita Zetuchin. I'm the current president of Lula Council fifty-two eighty-five. Uh, Lula Council is a, uh, just a little background. We've been active since twenty thirteen. It's League of United Latin American Citizens, which is a national organization celebrating ninety-two years of being active in, uh, the United States. Um, today I'm here, kind of a follow-up to reiterate something that we had, uh, met with Mr. Griffith with the park board, and I was not able to attend their meeting, but I wanted, I was wanting to come here, uh, to reiterate what, um, about the project, the Riverside Pickleball Project. Uh, Lula Council fifty-two eighty-five is, uh, supporting it. We understand, uh, the difficulty that you all have in hand, and we respect everything that you guys have done thus far. We are very excited about this project that if it is finalized, it is a project that will, we feel is going to bring a positive impact for the city of Moline and build a very strong foundation for, uh, the soccer program, uh, for youth, really. Uh, you know, Moline has a high school, has a very strong soccer program already. Coach Sanchez has done a wonderful job. And then Black Hawk College has had their first, uh, soccer, um, season, and they've done well. And then we actually heard from the coach, Charlie Ochoa, um, about this soccer, you know, he heard about the soccer pitch, and he also was excited about it, and he also offered and was willing to help with any implementation if any help is needed. So we wanted to really just kind of, uh, as a Lula fifty-two eighty-five organization, just, uh, let you know that we are, uh, a partner, that we, we recognize the work that you're doing is difficult. It's not unnoticed, um, and we're also, uh, watching closely with, uh, excitement and appreciation, and, uh, wanted to let you know that, you know, our council really here is hopefully a partner if we can help in any way. Respect everything that you guys have done, um, making sure that the voices of your constituents are heard, and I think now more than ever, it is critical for all of us to stand united and respect each other, um, as we move forward. So thank you to everyone for the work that you have done and you continue to do. I know you're making hard decisions. And I also wanted to thank, uh, Mayor Sangita for, um, all the work that she has done because, um, I see the, the quorums, the opportunities for the, the residents of Moline to, you know, voice their opinion and feel that their voices are being heard, and I think that that says a lot for what is being done in the city of Moline, and I commend all of you, and I come from his home, but yay for what you guys are doing. And I just wanted to kind of follow up because I did start with Mr. Griffith, who was very kind and explained everything to us. Um, we support the, the efforts, and I just wanted to come here and give you guys that message from us. Whatever we can do, please don't forget, uh, that we're here. Uh, we have, uh, like I said, we've been active since twenty thirteen. We do a lot of fundraising, um, and we take great pride in, in our biggest thing that we're doing is scholarship opportunities. This year in twenty twenty-two, we will be, have met our, our goal of awarding a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in scholarships in front to local students in our communities. And we do it with the support of the community, great sponsors, and Alaro has been a, a great partner and supporter, and we wanted, uh, to, you know, share that with you because we are very much try to stay involved and help with any, any way we can. We have, um, five, um, uh, we, we help with the voters registration, we help with the census last year. We, um, try to stay involved with, uh, the community. I'm currently serving on the board with Macala Fifth, I serve in the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Board as well, so whatever we can do, thank you for what the work that you do.
Thank you.
Are you unfamiliar with the, uh, the courts, the pitches that are going on? See this part too?
Yes. Yes, we, we got that information. Mr. Griffith did a great job.
Juanita, excuse me, please. While you're laughing, for me to...
Z E R T U C H E. Thank you. I should know that. I'm the host.
Do we have any other public comment? Thank you, please come forward.
Recognize a lot of faces here. Uh, my name is Brad Guy. I've been active in sports in this area as a participant, as a coach, as a fundraiser. Thank you very much for the activities done. And so, uh, we, we are, uh, I was brought this attention that we were talking about some changes down Riverside. I love Riverside, and I just want to bring you a couple of comments and thoughts to the table. Uh, going back almost two years, uh, ago, I distinctly remember a conversation with Eric Griffith, who I think is back here. He was a newly, uh, hired parking director. In that conversation, I laid his fears about what are we doing with this new pickleball complex? What's, what's happening here? We can't do that, it's too much money. And Eric listened to everything, he was great. We talked about it, we became stewards, and guess what? It worked, worked tremendously. Hats off to everybody. The time he was right, which is what I'm saying is very pertinent to what we're talking about right now going forward. There were a few dedicated Moline residents, they know who they are, that studied the pickleball landscape, not only in the Quad Cities, but surrounding areas and even other states, to make sure we were doing the right thing. Uh, we learned about building concepts, designs, uh, surfaces, uh, location, lights, et cetera. To borrow a phrase from my, one of my favorite movies, "Build it, they will come." Uh, and they did. They came in droves. Our first tournament last fall, two hundred and forty-two entries. A lot of them were not from Moline, Illinois either. A lot of them stayed overnight or two nights. A lot of them ate at our restaurants, and so I just wanted to know how much an impact pickleball is making. Uh, that was our first inaugural tournament. Well, we made educated decisions after working and watching the ebbs and flows of the sport, failures and successes of many, many venues, not to mention that during the pre, actually post, and in the middle of the pandemic, we raised a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to help with the project. Having some capital to continue growing is, is great, that we have the luxury of being able to go forward. On one hand, we gotta use this money, we're gonna do it, I understand that completely. Uh, however, to speed it up or without a clear research policy would be, to me, a fool's mission. Uh, putting it, uh, too many eggs in the Riverside basket, eastern term here, does not appear to be the, the most prudent case in my direction. Living near a prospect park for over thirty-five years, I truly appreciate having a neighborhood park with many options right there at my disposal. Uh, every part of Moline should have a neighborhood park with a, a draw, a venue, something that that offered for it. I really believe that. I think neighborhood parks is where we all grew up, and we'd like to see that come again. I full support the, the building of the four, uh, footso, uh, courts at Stevens Park. I think it's great. I think four courts will give us a good idea how that's gonna take. We don't know how that's gonna take. Pickleball, we had five years to talk, three years, and then two years to talk. Is this a, a fail effort, or is this the right thing to do? It's the most fastest-growing sport in North America and in the world, pickleball. I think we were right. We have seven-year-olds playing, seventeen-year-olds, seventy-seven-year-olds playing. Uh, so I wanted just to, we monitored growth to make sure that we're making an informed decision of future expansion before we do it. Uh, deck hockey is probably on deck, I'm guessing too. I don't know, I haven't been around for winter, but I'm guessing that's part of it. In conclusion, the arranged marriage of pickleball, tennis, footsall, and maybe deck hockey, I think may not be in our best interest right now. I, and I don't say, just give him a part, a thumbs up for that for sure. Uh, I think that having, uh, watching this for a while and other sports to see how they grow and put sandwich in them between the tennis courts and Moline Riverside parks, would I think would be, uh, a clutter situation. And I think that having tennis players, I mean, they don't demand silence like boppers, but they do like to have a little bit of peace and quiet. We have one on each end, that's gonna, that's gonna be gonna, I think there's gonna be lots of area to put those courts. I really believe that. And I still want Stevens Gold Park, I hope, I plan to be there. I couldn't play anymore, I'd like to try. Uh, the tennis crowd, I feel, has been, unfortunately, uh, endured many hardships over the last couple of years, from the terrible surfaces down there to the rundown parking lot to the lactated restrooms. I'm not even sure they can handle any more adversity. And I'm a former tennis player, my dad was a tennis player back in the fifties, so yeah, I know. Futsal will be a young, Moline youth sport. I think that's great. Get them out of the house, get them active. I, I, I think it's a great, great thing. Uh, yeah, deck hockey would be more of a young adult sport. But I do tell you this, those two sports, and I've seen a tape of the footsall, I've seen deck hockey in person. Those are loud sports, and that's great, those are fun sports, but they're loud sports, okay? If you have them sandwiching tennis courts, it's gonna be a lot of noise there, and I think we may dissuade the tennis players from playing it more, including maybe the high school users for tournaments months ago, not all in Moline. Uh, so if they prove to be as popular as pickleball, which they very well could be, then I'm all for an expansion to other areas in the city and that they're be warranted and be the absolute priority. We need to do that. But I think we need to walk a little bit careful here because we walked very carefully on the other, on the other item of pickleball, and it worked out fine, and I'm hoping we can still leave a little green space at Riverside, uh, because parking lots and things come by, and I'm, I'm all for the lazy river, uh, the second edition of the pool. All of us remember the first one, uh, did not hit it, this one will. But I think we need to be real careful at Riverside and make it a crown-prized jewel place to go for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else have further comment?
Good evening. My name is Randall, Randall Nelson. I live at forty-five twenty-seven Love W C, Moline. Um, I'd just like to underscore, uh, first of all, following Brad, I, foreplanning on my part, but, uh, I would like to underscore a few things, uh, that Brad said. I'm, I'm here because, uh, I play tennis, you know, I played tennis at Riverside Park for forty-plus years. Also play pickleball, contributed to the courts, I'm very proud of those courts too. But tennis is a reason that I, uh, got interested in the capital improvement plan. Um, I'd just like to say that Riverside, uh, tennis courts are extraordinary. Uh, I know people that have played, um, all across the Midwest in the USTA Tennis, competitive tennis, and have said that, uh, the, the courts at Riverside are the best venue to watch a tennis court, tennis match in the upper Midwest. Um, unfortunately, the playing surface has never lived, hasn't often lived up to that, that standard. So, um, I actually, one time, like five or six years ago, uh, was involved in a scunk works, um, program to, uh, to pay that, uh, it's a fundraiser to, to do something about the courts and spend some time at the, at the, um, at the, um, historical society trying to figure out when, when the courts were established. Got nothing there, spent six or seven hours at the library looking at microfiche of newspaper articles, trying to figure out the first mentioned tennis, almost went blind there and got nothing. Uh, I actually did get some, it went all, the last mention of tennis I saw was nineteen twenty-eight, but it didn't say, uh, where, where the courts were. It could have been, uh, could have been in, uh, Charles Dier front yard for all I know. There's a long history of, uh, of tennis in this community, and I would, I'll close by saying that the, um, construction of tennis courts has come a long way. And, um, that we are, we can build, we can rebuild those courts and, and last a lot longer than they have in the past. And I know Eric has done some studies on that, and I hope it costs a little bit more, but not having to deal with cracks and dead spots and, like I say, if it was, if, if a playing surface can be built up to the, to the actual venue, that would be a great thing for City of Moline. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment this evening?
Uh, my name is Tim Kennedy. I'm in thirty-five fifty-five Eighth Street, Moline. Um, just a couple of things to add to the conversation about this is that one of the advantages that, uh, footsall has over the, um, other sports is that if you wanna add footsall courts, it's a much smaller thing, and it's easier to find a small location to stick in footsall courts than it is if we wanna expand pickleball, which pickleball is expanding like crazy. I mean, in our first year, we got two hundred and forty-one people come to a tournament, that's a tiny tournament for foot pickleball. And if we get to the point where we expand eventually pickleball courts, we need a space big enough to put those, and the space right next to where they are now is also very conducive to having a tournament where everything is located in one spot. And the economic impact is, is fairly obvious. If you have that many people coming into town, there's gonna be an economic impact. But something that hasn't been mentioned tonight is that pickleball is a sport that, you know, we've got a lot of things, you know, we're, we got this for, you know, we've got this for the kids, we got that for the kids. Besides pickleball, what do you have that's a great sports activity for somebody that's over fifty or over sixty or over seventy years old? There are lots of people in those age groups that are actively and continuously playing pickleball. I happen to be one of them. And other than pickleball, I don't know of any really active and high participation sports that are available, and making pickleball a sort of, uh, pickleball mecca, or making Moline a pickleball mecca, I think is highly pretty advantageous, and, uh, there's a reason for the four, if you build it, they'll come. The tournament last year had people all the way from Chicago coming in to go to this tournament, and that would expand even farther if we had, you know, more courts down there eventually, but we need that kind of space to do it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything further?
Um, my name is Suzy Archer, and I'm in one thirty-fifth Street, Moline. And first of all, I just wanted to say that I'm grateful for all the hours of work you guys put in. I can't hear, I'm imagining. Um, just like I'm grateful to my parents and my grandparents' generation for having the insight back in the early nineteen hundreds to build the neighborhood schools and the neighborhood parks that we all enjoy in Moline. It set us apart from the other Quad Cities. People would move to Moline so that the kids did not get bussed, that kind of stuff. We could walk through parks, all that, well, that's important to me. Um, I'm, you probably know I'm part of the Friends of Moline Pickleball that, uh, we, it was about, I don't know, that's a long year, but I think it was three and a half to four years ago that we came to the park board and, um, asked them about building pickleball courts, and they embraced the idea, which was wonderful, and they were, they budgeted the money for six courts, and we, as a group, did a lot of research, like Brad was saying, um, and we realized that if we had eight courts, because they're next to those tennis courts, which there's eight tennis courts that can be made into sixteen pickleball courts very easily, we would have a viable place for a tournament, because you need to have a place where you can have it all in one spot, right? And so with twenty-four courts and eight of them being dedicated, good tournaments, people wanna play on dedicated courts if they can, you know, the lower games can only have courts, but, um, so we did, we agreed to raise a hundred thousand dollars, which we did, we raised about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to get that eight courts, so that the, you know, that would benefit the whole city of Moline, the whole area, with, um, economy for businesses would be used, all that kind of stuff. Um, we did that through several foundations, several organizations, several businesses, and a lot of individuals who don't need their own money to, um, to have that. We were, we were told that it would be likely that there probably would be room in the future if pickleball takes off, that we might, you know, have a place to expand a little bit more. If we were to be able to expand a little bit more, we could, we have polar regional tournaments, tournaments bigger than what we have right now, which would bring people from, you know, St. Louis, other places, all over the Midwest. Um, we also have a tennis club in Moline, which is an indoor, and there's no other place in the Quad Cities that has that. We, Moline has the opportunity right now to capitalize on pickleball. Nobody else is doing this. Nobody else has this many courts in one spot. Um, even T B K, their last addition is what ball at T B K? Not that I don't want ball. Um, anyway, pickleball has taken off. It's spilled daily, if you go by the courts, you know it's spilled every morning, every afternoon unless it's super hot, and every night. People come from all over the Quad Cities to play pickleball down there. Um, and when they do, when they leave, they go to the restaurants and eat lunch or whatever. This is happening all year round. In the winter, they play the tennis court now because they like coming to Moline, so we like that. Um, Brad talked about how many entrants we had in the tournament last year. This year, they're hoping to have, um, over three hundred entrants in the tournament, um, which were, and I think, I think our tournament director said they're hoping for between four and five hundred people, that's including spectators and all that, which is great for our economy. Um, Will Reed, and what he said, there were a hundred, about a hundred people out of that two hundred and thirty-seven entrants that came from other, not Quad Cities, came from other places. Um, anyway, our goal here is just to get, I think, we need to slow down just a little bit. I mean, I love the pool, we've done a lot of research, we've done a lot of planning on that, we're doing great job. We're starting to, to talk more about the tennis. Tennis, I think we're starting in the right direction on tennis. But the parking lot and roads, I think we still have some work to do to talk about that. Um, I, I don't see the vision as well as, as it should be, and I think if we could just slow down and see what happened at, um, Stevens Park with the footsall courts, and see how well they do, we could, you know, take some research, get some data there and see how they do before we go put more money and, and put them somewhere else. We don't even know for sure how they're gonna take off. Um, need the green space that, that'll be left, there'll be something green in the park at least, leave it for now, and then we can make an informed decision, um, you know, after we've done a little more research on that, so. Um, if we all work together, we can make Moline better.
Thank you. Any further public comments tonight? During that, we'll go to questions on the agenda.
Yeah, I actually have, um, several emails that they...
Okay. Okay. Back to public comment.
Sorry about that. Uh, the first one is from Dave Shealy. As a Moline resident and member of the Quad Cities Pickleball Club, I would like to express my thoughts regarding future direction and expansion of the Riverside facilities. Many of us Quad Cities pickleball club members raised and donated a fair amount of money, over one hundred thousand dollars total, attended multiple meetings, and volunteered at the Green Valley concession stand to help offset the city's cost to build the new pickleball courts. Some members play both tennis and pickleball, so having nearby tennis courts that can be used as temporary pickleball courts during future tournaments makes a lot of sense. Having played pickleball in other cities and other courts the past few years that have basketball and other reasons for kids to hang out, et cetera, lends itself to more problems such as riding bikes, skateboarding, sitting on nets, things that are damaging to the expense of less durable court services. Keeping this a racket paddle venue is the right direction for this space because those that play these two sports will be more respectful to keeping courts nice and to be used as they were intended. I'm currently visiting some cities west in Arizona where they have twenty-four permanent courts and are adding, or having to add eight new courts with temporary nets to keep up the demand for more pickleball courts. Adding footsall fields does not really fit in with future expansion or planning for the Riverside space potential. Adding footsall fields to Stevens Park is more logical at this time, and if there would be continued interest for these fields, I consider adding more of them to a soccer park such as Green Valley or in another space within Riverside, but not located directly next to the nice new pickleball courts. Please also consider using additional Riverside funding for the much-needed restrooms that are open at all times, not just when the pool is open. Also, a storage area with shelf, attached shelter is something that would be beneficial to the expansion of this project and to support the interests of pickleball players and to keep up with the fastest-growing sport in the country. Next one is from Todd Rosenbaum. First, I'd like to thank everyone for their support in the pickleball courts at Riverside Park. It's been a huge success for our community and attracts people of all ages every day. As the Riverside project continues to grow, I know green space and parking become major issues. I have seen the plans to include football courts in the green space to the west side of the tennis courts. I'm not familiar with footsall's current popularity and its need for space at this time. I would urge you to delay that decision until you see if the two football courts being built in Stevens Park is a success. Meanwhile, soccer could continue to use green space in the west of the pickleball courts. Delaying the decision will give you more time to see what sport fits better than the space currently allocated for footsall. As the former athletic director of twenty different sports, I, I have never seen a sport grow faster than pickleball, a sport that attracts all ages. The future may call for more courts as it continues to be the fastest-growing sport in the country. Please keep this in mind as we continue to build Riverside Park. Thank you for your dedicated time to improve the city of Moline. This one is from Maria Scarza. I've been a longtime resident of Moline. I'm writing to share some thoughts about some proposed changes to the original overall site plan I read about and saw online. From what I understand, you're considering changing the proposed four pickleball courts to two footsall courts. Full disclosure, I'm a tennis pickleball enthusiast. I grew up learning tennis and learning to teach tennis through the Moline Park Program. So you can imagine my excitement when I read what you were wanting to create at Riverside Park. Yes, it has been a long time coming, so kudos to you and all involved for all your hard work on this project. Seems I saw two different models that had one having four pickleball courts and the other two footsall courts. I feel we have a real opportunity to be the pickleball mecca of Western Illinois. The current facility is beautiful and is heavily utilized, as you talked about. The addition of four courts plus the tennis area would attract more players, tournaments, and tourists to Moline. I know footsall is becoming popular in urban areas. Your idea of diversifying activities offered at our parks is commendable, and when I hear they are building four footsall courts at Stevens Park in the spring, why not try to see how it takes? Will it attract players? Currently, pickleball attracts players of all ages five to ninety-five. We will not go wrong in adding courts. They will be used. Futsal will not be played by people of all ages. I also worry about placing the footsall courts in such close proximity to the tennis courts. That noise, a lot of people, may be a major distraction for the tennis players. Also, will footsall players come practice in the tennis courts? From the results you sent out asking residents if they wanted more pickleball courts or footsall courts, the majority wanted more pickleball courts. Why are these results being discarded? As a taxpayer, it bothers me that those opinions in the survey did not seem to factor into your decision for footsall. The next one is from Henry Weber. I have been a Moline resident for the last forty-eight years. I was a tennis coach many years in Moline and have used the Riverside tennis courts for the last forty-eight years. I was thrilled when I attended a meeting at the Garden Center last fall and saw two different sketches. One showed ten tennis courts and the other showed eight tennis courts with a footsall court on each end of the tennis courts. I recently became aware that eight tennis courts are being considered with two footsall courts. My understanding is that four footsall courts are being built at Stevens Park. Wondering why all the footsall courts would not be centrally located at Stevens Park? The restrooms, unisex, of the tennis courts are in pretty poor shape. I know there's a nice modern restroom on the south end of the swimming pool building, but feel that it's quite a ways to walk for someone playing tennis. Is there any consideration to build new restrooms for the tennis courts? As someone who also plays pickleball, I would hope consideration is being given for more pickleball courts at Riverside in order to bring in nationally sanctioned tournaments. Think there is no debate that pickleball is becoming a rapidly rising popular sport for all ages. Wondering if the addition to several, of several other parking spaces to the west of the pickleball courts is needed. The pool is open only ten weeks out of the year, and I feel the money being considered for pool improvements may not be the most prudent use of the major part of the seven million dollars being earmarked for Riverside projects. Thank you for allowing Moline residents' voices concerns. This one is from Tim Kennedy. I'm writing this email concerning the future use of Riverside Park, specifically concerning footsall and pickleball courts. The new pickleball courts, which just opened last year, an excellent addition to our outdoor recreation facilities. They're already drawing people from the surrounding areas, and the first tournament last year drew participants from as far away as Chicago. As pickleball continues to grow, it being the fastest-growing sport in the country, larger tournaments can and will draw bigger crowds and from farther distances, and will be significant, have a significant economic impact for our community. Additional courts in the future will facilitate these larger tournaments, and having those additional courts in the same location will be important to the success of the tournaments. All of this is well and good, but in my opinion, the most significant impact is that pickleball is a sport in which the largest percentage of participants are in the over-fifty age group, and this is ongoing participation, which has a large health and fitness impact than any other sport for this age group. The courts we already have are commonly filled, not just occasionally used. Please reserve the Riverside Park area for the pickleball growth that is coming. Thank you. Lynn Rumler. I'm writing this letter to express my views concerning the pickleball tennis area near the Moline Riverside Pool. I see plans to include a footsall area next to the existing pickleball courts. I believe this plan should be put on hold until the new footsall courts are built in Stevens Park area and data is collected to evaluate the usage of these new courts. It has already been established that the new pickleball courts have a high rate of usage and could possibly be expanded to draw large tournaments to the Moline area. The current property west of the existing pickleball tennis facility could be used for future pickleball expansion and parking for the new swimming pool. The data for the new footsall facility indicates high usage. The data for the new footsall facility indicates high usage. It would make sense to expand near the Stevens Park area. Another alternative would be to locate additional footsall courts near Green Valley, where full-size soccer fields currently exist. Would be interesting to see if footsall with smaller courts and five-on-five play may be used versus larger fields where soccer is an eleven-on-eleven game. Thank you to the Moline Park Board for letting me express my opinion. I'm sorry, this was actually from David Rumler, I was looking at the email. This is from Carol T. Cola. In consideration of the discussion of capital improvements for Moline Parks, I'd like to encourage allowing room for expansion of the pickleball courts at Riverside Courts. As noted in many media reports, it's the fastest-growing sport in the United States. The courts already dedicated are used daily from morning to evening in good weather. The local pickleball club is instrumental in encouraging new players all over the Quad Cities that bring people to Moline to play there and then spend money at our local businesses. The possibility of competing tournaments there also draws many visitors from outside the area that likely increase exposure for local businesses. This one is from Rosemary Daly. Regarding the pickleball courts, I believe we should eventually add more courts. We could eventually have more tournaments, which would bring people from all over to use our shopping, restaurants, and hotels. I feel that with tennis, pickleball, and baseball, we have enough unused at Riverside. The traffic parking plus little children from baseball could become too congested and dangerous. Since new footsall courts will be placed at Stevens, it makes sense to wait and see how well they are used and perhaps be, could, more could be added there as well. I think pickleball will be a real plus to business and people of the Quad Cities. We're proud of our new courts and appreciate your support. This one is from Sue Rosenfeld. My name is Sue Rosenfeld, I'm a resident, or a Moline citizen for forty-one years and an avid tennis and pickleball player. I was on a committee to help raise the community money for the Moline Riverside Park Pickleball Courts Complex, which I am very proud of as are many Moline citizens. Pickleball courts are a big success and have become a huge asset to our community. I recently heard about a vote that took place at the last Moline Park Board meeting in which two footsall courts were approved in the Moline Riverside Park Expansion Project. My first concern is that the vote was not on the agenda. My second and largest concern is I am not sure how popular footsall is in Moline to warrant building two permanent court sports purpose. I know that four footsall courts have been approved at Stevens Park. I think it would be a good idea to see how popular they are there before building two more footsall courts down at Riverside Park. I'm an avid tennis and pickleball player, so of course I would like to see more tennis and pickleball courts built. But more than that, I would hate to see permanent footsall courts built when we don't, when they aren't going to be used. I've raised money for the new Riverside Park Pickleball Courts. We need the popularity of this sport for viewing other Quad Cities pickleball courts. They will always build. I'm not against having something at the park for soccer players that keep some green space for them to play in until we see if footsall is popular enough to build two courts. Additional tennis, pickleball courts in that area would definitely benefit future tennis and pickleball tournaments as well as for community members to use as the sport. Pickleball continues to grow rapidly and is now the fastest-growing sport in America. This one is from Ryan Rosenfeld. To whom it may concern, I'm sending this email to express my concern about two footsall courts being built in between the tennis and pickleball courts in the Moline Riverside Park Expansion Project. I'm an elementary physical education teacher at Hamilton Elementary School in Moline, professional pickleball player, and a thirty-three-year-old citizen of Moline. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in America right now and will only continue to grow in the future. The reason being is that pickleball is an easy sport to play and can be played by people of all ages. Even in my curriculum at Hamilton Elementary School, the kids love it. It's a sport that is very family-oriented, which I think is another reason for its popularity. Do not think that footsall is popular enough to build two permanent courts down at Riverside for people to play. I understand that four footsall courts have been approved, rebuilt at Stevens Park in Moline. It only makes sense to me that you would see how it goes with those courts before building more at Riverside Park. I think green space would be left for the people when you play soccer around there instead of building permanent footsall courts. Pickleball is not a trend, but rather a sport that is going to be here to stay. I will not be surprised if you won't be considering building more courts in the near future to meet the needs of the citizens of Moline. And lastly, an email from Daniel Thompson. I'm a Moline high school teacher and an avid pickleball player. I'm concerned about the possibility of footsall courts being added between the tennis and pickleball courts. Is there a need for these courts? I have never heard of it, although that doesn't mean that it isn't growing. But I do know that the pickleball courts are widely successful at Riverside and there was a real need for them. The pickleball community in the Quad Cities is very large and growing, and this is the fastest-growing sport in the country. Riverside, if they save some space near the existing pickleball courts, could add more pickleball courts to the future, which would make it the largest complex in the Midwest. This could easily draw in the biggest tournaments, which typically look for large complexes so that they can manage hundreds of players over the same weekend. Thank you for your time.
That's all for that. Okay, thank you very much. Now we move to questions on the agenda. Any more? Are we all clear or not? Okay. Questions on the agenda? Hearing none, we move to our roundtable discussion. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, well, welcome there and counting to our foreground table. Maybe for, they've all been great up until this point, and I think we'll have another great discussion this evening regarding the city's capital improvement projects for Fiskals twenty-two, three, and four. And the updates that you're going to receive from the respective department heads, starting with the interim city engineer, then moving to utilities and so on. And without further ado, I'm going to bring the interim city engineer, Michael Schenk, to the podium and let him introduce the topic and then move through his presentation briefly. Our goal is to try and open it briefly, not to belabor each and every slide, and there will be there seventy-three slides. I don't want to be here that long, and I know you don't either, but all the slides are important. Send them out in advance, if you have questions, you could write them down. And then the real purpose of roundtables is to have dialogue and have discussion, so we'll do brief presentations and then open it up to questions in queue. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'll introduce myself. For the record, I'm Mike Schenk. I'm the interim city engineer. I'm here tonight to do, to do an overview of the CIP projects, the Fiskal twenty-two, Fiskal twenty-three, and twenty-four. According to the action plan that was put in place, some of the categories that we're going to be looking at in regards to the CIP projects was the multi-year CIP and budget, the rebuild public work staffing levels, as well as to create funding investments to reduce flooding. As, as mentioned just by, by Mr. Vitas just a few minutes ago, it will be the engineering department starting first, will be followed by utilities, library, public works, and then parks. So starting off, we're, we're going to take off, and let's see, which way does this go? Okay, engineering projects. A lot of this you, you have seen before. I provided you a written documentation to show all the different projects that, that the engineering department is, is involved in currently. Both for the past year, which was the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, but now we're into the twenty-twenty-two, and these are the maintenance programs that are, that are currently taking place throughout the city. Some of the projects, and just so you know, the red, that cost just came in today, that project was bid today, but those are the costs that, that these projects have previously come in by bid, and the budgets that are shown are the numbers that are, are the current budgets. And you can see that some of them came in under, some of them came in over.
Mike, I have a question that you just answered up already. On payment markings, the budget is two hundred and fifty thousand. Do you remember what last year's budget was? My question, the reason I'm questioning that is we put a whole lot of paint on a lot of streets around town for complete streets, bike paths, and stuff of that nature. It's important to remark those every year or as they fade, we have trouble with that. So I'm trying to figure out what we spent last year versus what this new budget is for two.
I'm sorry, I do not know and remember what they, what they spent last year. I can find it out for you. I write that information to you.
I appreciate, thank you.
All right. And then we had the traffic initiatives and then street patching. That is what the budget came, budget versus the bid numbers were, and then the asphalt maintenance, which is the milling and resurfacing. That uses the MST funding. Then this is the project that just came in today. It was, it was bid, it came in at eleven o'clock. The budget was two oh five, the contract cost was two nineteen, five fifty-four. Reason I bring, bring these up specifically is because what we're seeing as a trend is higher prices coming in due to a number of different factors. You've got the inflation rate that's, that's climbing versus last year's rate. You have the cost of oil, which is, which is doubled. It was last year around fifty dollars, it's now up and down around a hundred dollars. And then you also have, you're, you've got a flooded market right now that's occurring for the contractors. Not only this city, but other cities surrounding this community is also bidding out their projects to, to pay, to, to get their infrastructure done as well. So you've got three different factors that are, that are, that are adding to the additional cost that you see on some of these projects. Just to, I thought I'd make that, you know, aware that that's going on and.
That's what I had.
Yeah, along those same lines, and I would assume this would be pretty easy to get. Can we kind of see the number of different contractors that are bidding on each of these projects? Just to make sure that we're getting the same number, understanding that, you know, prices have gone up, the cost for health and everything, but there's been some anecdotal things of different contractors saying that they weren't going to bid in Moline for whatever reason. And I just want to make sure that we're getting the same number of bidders as we've historically, and if we're not, then that may also be an issue that we need to address. And it's two fifty for pavement markings in twenty-twenty-one.
Can we continue? This is the asphalt program, the milling and resurface, this is the MST funding program, excuse me. Those are the, no, the River Drive overlay, that's bid April the twenty-ninth, that is actually being bid in Springfield because that has federal money attached to it, and that's where this project is being bid, is in Springfield. And then the other cost, as you can see, that's, that's substantially over the budget. Then we also have some twenty-twenty-one asphalt program carryover projects that, that were under contract and they're actually being worked on. So those are moving along. The reconstruction projects, again, we have two of them that are bid in, actually, three of them that are going to be bid in May. The last one, the Eighth Avenue and Thirty-Sixth Street, those, that particular project is, is being transferred over to the CDVG funding for construction. We're going to be bidding this in May and then completing it on a fast track for construction because we got to spend the money by a certain time period. And this is a good project. It's almost complete in design, so it'll be fairly quickly out and constructed. So we want to spend the money that we have available through the CDVG funding, and it does meet their criteria.
Mr. Vitas?
Thank you. That Eighth Avenue and Thirty-Sixth Street, I was looking at the map, and then I went back through my records, and I, I see it's changed over time. At one point, we, we were doing Thirty-Sixth Street, they were going to do Eighth Avenue as well, and it looks like Eighth Avenue is no longer included.
No, it is. Eighth Avenue is going to be done as well as Thirty-Sixth.
So in the actual picture, though, it doesn't show that? Yeah, I need math. I'm trying to figure out where, it shows thirty. Yeah. So the Eighth Avenue is going to get done all the way to the.
Yeah, it's just around the circle.
Yeah, it's just a circle, but my question was Eighth Avenue then. And I'm just interested in what's going to get done there because there's, there are seat pillows on both sides and, and people walk there, so I'm hoping it's, you know, why. It goes past Peterson Park.
Actually, going down to Peterson Park is going to be converted to a trail. Thirty, Thirty-Sixth Street is going to be converted to a trail from Eighth Avenue up to Peterson Park. That's in our plans to.
Eighth Avenue down to Sixth Avenue.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was in the part that we talked about having public meetings to, I've got a ton of feedback, and I've shared some of that with, with that, residents in that whole neighborhood or they've talked about it. Anyway, that Eighth Avenue, though, it runs in front of Peterson Park and down to a dead-end street. Dead-end, Eighth Avenue, Dead Ends, just east of Peterson Park. Is that part of what's getting done here?
It's the Eighth Avenue, it's that, that where it comes up, Thirty-Sixth comes up to Eighth, and Eighth goes for about two blocks and then Dead Ends.
Yeah.
And then, and then thirty, and then Thirty-Sixth Street, I'm sorry. Yeah, Thirty-Sixth Street continues up to Peterson Park. That's going to be the, the trail.
So you are saying that Eighth Avenue is going to be done on that, that portion that leads to the Dead End?
Yes.
That's what you're clarifying for, yeah?
Right. And then Thirty-Sixth, south of that intersection.
Yes. If I've got my direction correct. That is north. Okay. North, south. South.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it just wasn't drawn that way, and I was, I was a little confused because it, it used to be drawn that way. I noticed in the last year or two that that section of the drawing has gone missing, so.
Mr. Vitas?
Thank you.
Different topic, the second one, Twenty-Sixth Avenue behind the high school. That's certainly a short construction period waiting for the high school to get out, and then the high school comes back in the last week of August. A big job, two point one million. Are we going to be able to get that done during?
Okay.
Yes.
And it, on, I think on this, it just says we're doing engineering this year, so if anyone update that. There, there's a bunch of things, we're either, are way off. So if we can get updated and have that show that goes on.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the, oh, the Fiftieth Street Place, that's that hill, I think we had talked about it a couple of times, the Complete Streets, where it starts at the top of the hill and then goes, I don't know, maybe seventy-five feet or something goes into a driveway. And then it's just basically a, a one-lane drive down, and then there's a couple of, of houses down below. And there had been talk about, rather than rebuilding, and if that's a reconstruction, it's two hundred and fifty-five, two, yeah, two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Is it, so it's just another, like, chip seal? Is that what we're going to do on it?
Reconstruction is one where they take the street out and replace it.
Well, but, I mean.
It's a short run, it's only between Fifth and Sixth Avenue.
So that goes all the way up that hill, doesn't it?
No, no, it was that.
Sixth Avenue stops at the, at the first left turn as you're going up. Turnside, Fiftieth Street. As it turns into a diagonal, turns to Sixth Avenue.
Okay, so you're not doing that part of it? It's just the, just the hill? Because I think there were some concerns when we were, when we were talking about it of were we doing this whole thing, or was it, was it going to be a good use of funds to do that entire stretch? You remember us?
I do not recall this from.
It was about the same time we were talking about the converting.
I'll go ahead and send a memo and make, and send you a quick sketch, outlining exactly where that goes.
That'd be great.
And then these are the other reconstruction projects. Thirty-fourth, Thirty-Sixth, and then the Avenue of the Cities. That was scheduled for, the intersection was scheduled for this year. It is still under design and it will, won't be constructed until twenty-twenty-three, we're going to postpone that. We've also included another count at this intersection. During the meeting of the Complete Street Committee, we went ahead and decided to go ahead and do another count at this intersection, traffic count. So you see, you know, because we have different, various time periods for the counts that we're using, so this one will solidify. And this will also be included in the Avenue of the Cities traffic study that will be on the agenda here shortly for approval.
Along those lines with the, the, when you're doing the counts, because that's right by Wharton, and there's heavy, what, school activity at certain times of the year? Have you thought about that? Like, what months you're doing it in to get an accurate count of the heaviest usage versus June, May, June, July?
It's, it, we're going to be doing the counts during the period of time the school is open. So that we do, we do pick up that.
It's on September, right? I will.
Quite possibly, yes. But we made sure that the contract says that we will, we will be taking the counts dur- during a period of time where the school is open.
But now they're not in selling.
Yeah. A different home game might be good to know.
I'm okay if we don't keep having the homecoming, but we should become irregular.
But we also shouldn't engineer it. It's like engineering a parking lot for Christmas Eve. I mean, you engineer it for, you know, everyday use.
All right, bikeway projects, those are the the talking about the road diets and research and restriping the the bike lanes, et cetera. We're actually looking at 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 several different projects where that was under construct under discussion in previous meeting, and we haven't settled that. We'll probably bring back with some recommendations as to which which areas we want to go ahead and and do under under this particular capital improvement project. And then we have the Forty Eighth Street that that's the safer routes to school, and then the Nineteenth Street bike path, that's under design.
Is that going to get pushed to another year?
Does I want it or? Okay. Nineteen, that that may get pushed into another year. We may not get it.
Because we had a budget to change one of it this year for construction.
Um, the bike paths, safer routes to school, I know we passed the the sidewalk, correct? Through through the council. I'm wondering what the consequences are of a bike path on that street where parents park to pick up from school. Where is that? That is, that would be planned for the street, and we'd be taking away a huge amount of parking for pickup, that pickup plan?
It's off-street on the east side of.
Forty Eighth Street. Oh, yeah, that's fifty.
Yeah, that that's coming from the Y down to.
That's the angle, as opposed to the slanted part of the angle, the right angle.
But it is the hypotenuse, but it is, you know, but but it goes from the Y down to Wilton, but on the east side, and it's off-street.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to make sure.
And and I think the 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 safe paths that you were talking about is the Lincoln Avenue.
No, no, I'm talking about there, we did the same.
We passed that two years ago, this one.
Okay, well, there was a recent one, so I wanted to make sure that we were not creating another problem.
In hindering hindering the parking kind of.
Well, it's really, it's really about the safety of pickup, because that's a very congested time of the day for those families. Thank you.
And then the miscellaneous projects, the technical assistance, that's a budget line item, the Arsenal Bridge, the fall stacking, that's to take care of the issues that we're having with the with some of the some of the concrete falling down. And then the traffic signal, I want to explain this one just quickly. This is at Sixteenth and Thirty Ninth Avenue. This this particular replacement is one where the MetroLink is going to be replacing the Fox Culvert under the roadway. And in order for them to do that, so they don't bottom out their 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 buses, they're taking on the cost of that, and we're going to be putting in, so that they can do the construction, we have to set up temporary signals. And then once they're finished with the construction, then we can take it the temporary down and and or put the new ones up and take the temporary down. So we're we're having to pay for that additional cost in there for the temporary signals that have to be in place while they're doing the construction. So I'll just let you know what what's going on with that.
With with that traffic signal, because I think we had made an amendment to our engineering scope for the Sixteenth and and Avenue of Cities, that they would do engineering on Sixteenth all the way down to that intersection to possibly create a left-hand turn like into Jersey Mikes and and those, so it goes all the way down to to there. Are we taking that? I I just don't want us to spend three hundred eighty six thousand, put new traffic lights in and masked arms, and then we re-engineer, put a turn lane in, and realize our masked arms are five feet short for a turn and then have to to do this again.
I'll check and verify that.
Okay, you you could send something to us to make sure what's what's going on with that.
Great. I have a really bizarre question. When we take down these lights and have temporaries, are these reusable assets? I'm just asking in terms of like, does this cost now? Is it something we can reuse in a future project?
Temporary, it depends on what type of temporary they come in. Sometimes they can come in with something that that's somewhat portable. They set it up, they maintain the the temporaries until until the completion of the of the new light fixtures, the masked arms, and then they and they just pull them up and then and then take off. They they, there's different temporaries that they can that they can put out there in order to provide that.
We're not buying them then.
No, we're not buying the 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 temporary signals and mask arm. It's it's just temporary that that's in place to control the intersection. And then on the contracted engineering services, these are projects that you've already seen. The River to River, we still do not have a a contract on that, we're still working on that one. But the Avenue to the Cities Traffic Study, that's the one I mentioned earlier about Sixteenth, and the Avenue of the Cities has has been expanded. This is the contract, this is the cost that you'll be seeing at the upcoming council meeting.
Mr. Warren.
Yeah, the the River to River Bike Path Phase Two, is that the one where we made application for grant but didn't bid it? So we're doing the engineering to get ahead of the game? Does that does that go from like Avenue of the Cities to like around Jefferson?
I'm not sure. I'll have to I'll have to give that back to you on that. I'll ask Laura specifically on that one. I know that she's in, she's she's working with with a couple of different companies to come up with 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 their with their proposals.
Oh, okay, all right. Thanks.
And then the parking lots and roads and service roads, that was already presented to you in the council. And then this is your C I P project timeline. Mr. Walburn, I think you asked for that. It is here. Put in so that you can actually see, the green is the design, the blue is the bidding and letting of the project itself, and then the construct, the construction is the, let's say flesh color or orange color. And you can see where mostly your construction is taking place or starting to take place now on these projects.
Mr. Warren.
Yeah, so I I'm just, because I'm trying to track the things that are getting pushed. You know, Nineteenth Street looks like because there's no flesh color construction. Avenue of the Cities, it does have, but that should probably be taken off, right? There's not going to be any construction this year.
Correct.
Is there anything else that's pushing from that was budgeted in twenty twenty two that is not going to get built?
I know the Avenue of the City intersection will not. That that's still under design. And as far as I know, not any, but that doesn't mean that if something doesn't happen, if some, if if we don't get the the design completed in time, we would have to push it if we don't have enough time before before the winter season.
Your honor.
Yes, Mr. Walburn.
Since these projects aren't going to get done, especially non-M F T funds, are there any other jobs that are designed in the hopper that these funds can be moved up to get constructed this year? In other words, I hate to lose ground, if you have anything in the bank that's designed waiting to go that didn't make the list that we could push up and get done yet this year?
Not currently.
So help me understand, because we had last year budgeted an extra million dollars to get a year ahead on projects exactly for these issues. Can you, I mean, and and maybe you don't have them off the top of your head, and that's fine, but can we get a some kind of analysis of like, what that million dollars went to? Are we a year ahead? How many, I mean, for us not to have any projects that we could shift these funds to, this is exactly what we're trying to avoid from having.
So I have a question, this, I brought this up last week, is Mr. Vitas, is would is the most likely explanation because we lack staffing to get that accomplished?
The big part of it.
I mean, you didn't join us until the call. Is that one of the reasons?
A lot of the issues relate to staffing. Well, let's answer that. A lot of the issues relate to staffing here.
Yes, Mr. Walburn.
When we talked about this, though, we anticipated staffing being an issue, getting them done in-house. We knew it was going to be a chore to get them in-house, and we discussed with staff to have the ability to go to private designers, so to speak, engineering firms, and get those done. That was one of our, as this group, this this council here discussed that, so we had stuff in the queue waiting to go. So we realized it could have been staffing doing internally, but we knew we were going to have to privatize some of the work, and that's exactly why we budgeted that million dollars. And so that's where my concern is, did we just not spend it? Did we not put enough projects in the hopper or?
I can answer that question. We've spent over nine hundred thousand dollars in consulting fees for these projects that the consultants are are designing, either have completed because we're in construction or they're trying to finalize it so that we can get into construction. So we have, we have spent a great deal of money for the consultants to assist us to get to all these projects out for construction.
So since we're down to two design engineers in-house, we actually did very little in-house that, and we had to use that million dollars outside.
We have done some, but because of staffing, we couldn't do as much design in-house, but we did, we did execute a number of contracts with around four or five consultants that have been assisting trying to get all these projects out out the door in order to go to have them constructed this season.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
And I understand that it's the outside, the nine hundred thousand to a million dollars that we were spending to design this year, while staff was then supposed to be designing projects for the following year. And I understand maybe you didn't, you haven't been able to get a full year ahead with the following year, but I'm assuming in-house we were able to do some things that are twenty twenty three projects.
We have been able to do a limited number of projects because of the staffing problems that we have. We have not.
We just haven't completed any of them?
To my knowledge, we haven't got anything complete yet that we can't. And once we do complete it, we'll probably, if it comes in that we can get it out to bid now, then we'll get it out now so that we can get it constructed now, or we hold it and wait until next year, depending on when that timeline is and the type of project it is.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Vitas and Mr. Warren.
I'll let Sam go first. I'll yield the floor to Sam first.
You guys can stay on this road.
I'm going to stand this subject. I just want to add to the conversation that one of the difficulties that that we and others are running into is there's a limited number of engineering companies that we can turn to. Those engineering companies are getting just as overwhelmed as everyone else because of the large volume of resources that became available, projects that are being pushed forward, timelines that need to be met in terms of using our dollars. You know, staff shortage is just a part of that, but, you know, we've reached out, you know, I M A G is swamped, we've gone to Hutchinson to do work in utilities, and I think we're going to be challenged not only in terms of, you know, shopping out all the work and getting it back to us, but even in terms of recruiting some of these positions. Engineers are in super high demand, and they are very near impossible to recruit. So that's one of the big challenges that we're having, and even if it's at that junior level or mid-level, let alone at the director level, that's that's where we're running into the biggest challenge. So just sharing that so you're aware of it.
Mr. Warren.
So I was just looking, thank you. So I was just looking at this Eighth Avenue and Thirty Sixth Street. It's been designed, it's been, or it's being bid in May. There's no orange after it.
It's it's under design right now. It hasn't been completed. What happened was that this was actually a M F T project, and the I D O T was was doing their review, and they were having some issues with with some of the environmental concerns that they had, and they wanted a minimum width of, I think it was thirty feet wide road, and that was pushing us out into into the ravine that's out there, and that was that was causing some problems.
So that'll still be done this year, probably?
Yes, we're, we can now finish it. We're pulling it out from the M F T funding and putting it into C D B G, which doesn't require us to put it at thirty-foot lanes, a thirty-foot roadway, by the way, or lane width. We can narrow it down to, you know, twenty-two, twenty-four, and not have the impact of the on the ravine.
Right, that's, I know that's tricky, but there are a lot of people that walk. Here's the park around that corner, it's a very thin road.
And what we're looking at is to put a sidewalk along the embankment that goes upwards, so that so that you have a sidewalk there.
Thank you. I have one last also.
Yes, Mr. Warren.
Resurfacing, you mentioned that Twenty Third Avenue is not going to go there, or Avenue of the Cities is not going to go this year.
Resurfacing.
I think you've talked about the intersection at.
Sixteen. Okay, we're, that's a, that's a, that's a redoing of the intersection, adding concrete sidewalk, adding to the width of the existing sidewalks, et cetera.
Where are we doing in twenty twenty-two the bulk of our resurfacing? Asphalt overlays?
The River Drive, Thirty Second Street, Avenue of the Cities.
It's the green, but.
And they're all going to go.
Yes, Twenty Ninth Street, I'm sorry, forget it.
Twenty Ninth Street.
He named it, yeah.
And then the stuff that didn't get done last year.
Yes, we have two projects that are that are going to be done this year that that we had under contract last year.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you. What's up next?
We did about one point five million this year in asphalt.
This is the twenty twenty-three program. Now, these are all, you know, budgets are the budgets that are that that we have current for twenty twenty-three. Those are the two alleys that we have listed that will be doing some reconstruction. This is the asphalt program, which is the miller resurfaced. I want to bring to your attention that the pavement condition report recommendations are going to be done within the next few months. The company has been contracted to do the work. What we want to do is we want to then look and see what we have programmed and then see what the what the report says in regards to, was, is there something that we should possibly change out based on the report from what we have listed here? So we may have to do some changing around a little bit because of the report.
The pavement management report that they've been contracting for.
And I agree, it's very possible that as co- as prices have risen, something may get squeezed out when we take a look at that for the next new year budget. I mean, I don't think it makes sense to do that planning right now, we'll do it when it's closer, obviously.
When we have the report, we'll then have to look at everything that's planned and then see what the report recommends and see whether or not, you know, this is, this is the programs that we want to continue that that's already listed, or do we want to use a different project that they list as a higher priority?
Possibly. Well, that, but also just, it is likely that these projects budgeted are budgeted too low, some of them.
That is another.
Based on the market forces we're dealing with this year, but it doesn't make sense to redo those numbers until the next budget cycle.
Correct, and and you are correct, they are low based on based on what we're seeing price-wise, they will have to be bumped up.
It's a likely quarter or two we'll have to double away to recruit.
Possibly, yes. Or use or bring in some more reserves, whatever the case is, depending on how you how you feel these projects should should be handled.
Okay.
And then there are some reconstruction projects. And then the bikeways. These are language projects. And these are all listed as line items in the C D. And then that is the Arsenal Bridge, that is the that is the state that needs to be done in order to evaluate, a complete evaluation of the bridge decking and and such. Now, that should also play into what we've been talking about in regards to the funding, the federal funding for for the bridge.
That is correct. I mean, we we were. That is correct. I mean, we, we were, we've been in dialogue and discussions with the Arsenal and the Army as well as the Roosevelt Group, you know, in terms of bringing this project forward at some point, not only the replacement of the decking, but also the letdown structure that was discussed about in between the Kone Center and the trail. The trailhead basically at that point leading across.
It was at that roundtable that they were with us at that they told us 2023 was more than anything in 2023.
Yeah, the timing, it's all about timing. We want to make sure we've got the right engineering done. We want to have the right engineering figures. And we want to write a good proposal so that we're invited to submit the application for the grant. Because they won't let you just submit the grant. They expect to review proposals first. They, you know, a committee of military personnel representing all branches actually review all proposals and then determine which ones they want to allow to actually submit for grants.
Is that in 2020, September 2023? Was that one of those?
That would be, yeah, that would be, yeah.
Do we need to provide some funds to hire the right consultants to, to give us the best shot at doing? I mean, I, I don't want us in a situation where we wait and then we budget it for 2023 and then we get around to it in May of 2023 and now all of a sudden we've got two months to put together. I'd rather have eighteen months or sixteen months to put together a proposal like this. Because this is, I mean, this is kind of a make or break if this is going to happen. Otherwise, it's going to be six million dollars on our back that is going to take up multiple years of service work in the city.
Yeah, it's going to be done.
And nothing else can, and so that's where.
No, I think, I think you're right. I mean, this is a huge project, costs like six million dollars. It's probably the biggest project we've seen tonight. I mean, it's not even up there yet. And the grant funding in terms of what it would provide, you know, the Roosevelt Group, they are the go-to consultants. They are the ones that we advise to work with as we develop the proposal. They've made themselves available to us. They have not even suggested a cost for their service, to be honest. It's been just upright, this is what we do, this is who we represent, this is what we're willing to do to work with you on this. You know, and at least, you know, as the engineering costs are being calculated, a lot of that is going to depend upon future plans for the arsenal itself and what they're going to manufacture long-term that we're not aware of, which they may not identify, which I know they want to know probably. But they know what the loadings will be on the superstructure. And that structure needs to be beefed up in terms of first or as a part of that, putting on the new decking, you know. And then basically the letdown structure is just bonus. I mean, that's just bonus in order to allow very close personnel, as well as citizens to get to and from the island if they change the security.
So what you're essentially asking is, do you need a thumbs up to go to review our finances and see if we can?
Make a budget amendment if we need to.
Make a budget amendment to help move this along.
If necessary, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure at this point if I need a budget amendment, but if I do, I will come back for it.
Okay.
So is the Roosevelt Group affiliated with the Army or the Arsenal?
They are, they are a consulting organization that works directly with the military across the country. All projects related to the bases.
So, so they're being paid from that side? Which is why they're not inside this right now?
Not, not yet.
Nobody's asked for any money yet, but when they do, I usually, you know, hang up their phone. I say, hey, hold on a minute.
But, but that's where maybe getting them to really focus on what you're thinking. They're consulting, they're giving us answers and whatever. But maybe engaging them early gets in the paper and our file open earlier.
And I don't even know if at this stage the Arsenal has done all of their, all of their engineering and calculations at this point, but we definitely meet with them. We have conversations about it. And, and our plans are obviously to get this done through grant dollars if at all possible. Because I think that's what's held it up all along. Is that the cost to do it almost we require upon? That's definitely true.
Thank you.
And then the Harton Lots and Service Rooms. And again, that's an overview of where, of where the 2023 projects are. And then you go into the 2024 programs. And those are the budgets for the 2024. And again, the alleys ways have not been actually determined. And again, the study will help, will help select those alleys that need to be, need to be reconstructed. And the, the only project that's listed is for miller resurfacing is Nineteenth Avenue at that cost. The rest is, is something that will be coming out of the payment condition report.
And that's because the grant will receive there?
Yes, that is grant money. And then 2020, this is the reconstruction projects. That's again, the only one listed. The bikeway projects. The miscellaneous projects. The Harton Lots and Service Rooms. And so I'm, I'm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For the Morgan Park, you think, would that be in 2024? The phase one of it?
No, that should push to 2030.
That should push to 2030.
Oh, it wasn't low, Joe.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Your Honor, please, one last thing. Mike, I, I know I can speak for the council. If we can get ahead on projects and get in the queue with the private contractors if we have to get our projects in as quick as possible and get ahead so we can spend those funds. Because we all know that ARPA money is out there. And we have to spend it within a certain amount of years. And we need to get in there and get our projects in the queue.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
And if that means that we need to, again, do budget amendments this year so that we can engage them still this year to get in their queue for next year, I think we need to do that. Because otherwise, if we wait to do business as normal, we're going to wind up standing in line the exact same time everybody else does. But we get ahead.
We're going to have to handle a lot of people at this point because of what we did last, last fall, last summer, early fall. But it doesn't mean they're not going to catch up.
Correct. I was going to just remind the council, points well made. We're on the same page. But you had the opportunity to present about our ARCA plans originally and we were complimented by others because we are way out in front with the plan. Now the execution, just, we should stay on top of that timeline budgetary a little bit. Stay ahead of them.
That's the game plan.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. I think we've done a good job over the last year communicating with you all to ensure that you understand what the UCL's priorities are. So these slides should go relatively quickly. Just as a reminder, we're talking about the sewer systems and the drinking water system. So in water pollution control priorities, we're going to be relating to the two treatment plants. Of course, we were in front of you a few weeks ago to talk about South Slope and the need for improvements there. There is funds budgeted in 2022 and will be coming for you in the next month or two for a construction contract for de-watering equipment at North Slope. You, the council authorized the purchase of the equipment earlier this year. So that'll be something we're going to be investing about $2 million in, in 2022. And then the other main challenge associated with the wastewater utility is the overflows, the chronic overflows that we have along the North Basin and the South Basin, along the River Drive corridor, near Benabado River Parkway and along John Drew Road. And so we actually just submitted today for some, for some federal funding for, for some of this work also. So we'll know by the end of, of the month. On the drinking water utility, for the last fifteen years or more, we've been faced with this challenge relating to wet water discoloration. And we were going to continue marching down that path. If you recall, back in 2019, the council authorized a use exemption for those customers affected by this, this problem. And currently, we have about fifty-three customers receiving that exemption. We have about, in the low thirties, the total number of sites, we'll see a map here come. Also, in 2021, the water utility completed a mandated risk and resilience assessment along with an emergency response plan. And it was revealed that, that we need to foster our physical and cybersecurity, especially cybersecurity, that's. And then lead service lines will, will be required by 2024 to come up with a plan to fund the replacement of all lead service lines. And there are about 5,000 of them in there.
Is that lead service lines to the property line? Or, because I was, I was looking at the map that you guys have where, and, and there's a number of them, but then also led from the property line to the home? Is, what's the, what's the requirement? What's the?
Yeah, so it's interesting. The question's very interesting because most in Moline, there are very few that are led all the way from the water main up to the house, less than fifty.
It must all be my life, huh?
But, but the, the US EPA and their update to the London Capital Rule last year determined that galvanized steel lines that are downstream of a lead line are classified as lead also. So that'll be something I'll have to get in front of you here in the next couple of years. So to return, how do you guys want to handle those, those service lines on the customer's side? Whether it's on the customer to, to replace that? Because there's a timeframe when we replace ours, but they have to replace their side. So we'll need to coordinate that with the customers. So then stormwater, sorry. Do you have any idea how many of those lines we're talking about? Yeah, yeah, there's about 5,000 lead between the main and the, what's called the stop box. And then from the stop box to the house, either galvanized steel or lead, you know, there's in the same ballpark, about 4,000.
And simply replacing the lead isn't adequate because of damage that's already done to the galvanized steel?
In theory, the, the lead particulates can come off and go into the corrosion, low-density corrosion compounds that are in the galvanized steel.
The good thing is our water is so good, there's not much to change.
Yeah, and.
The EPA would say it that way.
And we've, and I'm sorry to interrupt you. We've exhausted some of the federal options for helping to pay for that? Or are there new things still coming out along those lines?
That, that should become clearer and clearer. And so there'll be options there. And then stormwater, the big challenge is, is the, one of the goals is to create a stormwater master plan. And then, as you know, we've talked to you about the Forty-Ninth Street pumping station relocation due to the Amtrak work that needed to be done.
Yeah, can I speak to that for just a second? The stormwater management plan? I mean, and Michael, you can jump into a couple of our experience down in Florida and my experience in other cities here in the Midwest. I mean, not having a stormwater management plan in and of itself isn't a bad thing, but we have major issues, right? That hinder development or impact future development areas, especially like our industries, which we're trying to solve for, which was 3.5 million dollar grant that we're pursuing with FEMA. And the grant writer is working on that. But one of the things that, that is really beneficial to it, if it's done properly, is that it does provide for, it addresses that entire issue of the flood plains, the flood zones, and it goes in and addresses it so that when FEMA looks at that, if you have a master plan for, for, for stormwater management, which includes these rivers, you know, they usually will accept that level of detail, professionally prepared to address your issues related to, you know, flood elevations, whether it's the hundred-year flood or the 500-year flood. As you know, we have big issues that this city and all the cities here in Rock Island County and Henry County have been testing for years with the IDHR. So one of the things that, that we need to do is we need to have this master plan. It won't be cheap to prepare it, but it does protect all those hundreds and hundreds of properties located along the Rock River and those properties that are on the Mississippi as well. So, you know.
So you're saying it will help us with the issue we're having with IEM?
It can.
Potentially.
It can.
Because we have proof A of past flood management that we've done a good job with and B, a plan for the future.
So for example, one of, one of the things that would happen is that in order to do it properly, you would want to have LiDAR maps or base maps prepared, prepared. They do identify elevation. That's the purpose of them. They clearly identify all the buildings and all the ground elevations so that you know precisely what you're dealing with. Because over time, things fill in, people build properties up, you know, they rise and they raise up, sometimes they sink. So that LiDAR map actually is a major part of informing where the flooding would naturally occur in any type of storm event. So, and, and our issue here is that this is not just a Moline issue. This is an issue that, that all of us along the river are facing, whether it's Rock Island County, Rock Island, Rock Island County, you know, East Moline, so was everybody. I mean, even, even East Moline lost a major project since I've been here because of this whole flood plain issue, right? Project went elsewhere. So, you know, is it a by-state project? You know, do they actually, do all the communities help fund it? Does by-state actually consult for it and prepare it so that we can speak to the issue of the letter that went out, right?
Yeah, I wanted to just take a moment to, to just update the council that this is, issue by-state has been our advocate for all these communities. And they recently sent another letter making the case for past floodway management and that it's been done well. And that's why you haven't seen as many problems as you might have around here. So taking on this blanket rule for all of Illinois and asking for it to go back to a kind of carve-out for this area because we have managed it on our own and seeking local control basically.
What do you want to say?
I'd like to say something real quick. When you, when you do your study and you get your, you do your, you do your LiDAR, either a one-foot contour or a two-foot contour, you have to match that to your, your water, your, your stormwater study that includes all your runs for all your different storm events, your, your five, your 25, your 50, your 100, your 500. Without those results, you cannot go up in front of FEMA or possibly the Illinois. Right. Because you don't have the study complete. You need to have the study as part of your, as part of your reasoning and the recommendation to not, not adhere to the current flood zones, but you'd like to have them changed. And the only way that FEMA is going to change it is if you do have a water management plan and you have done your runs for your, your stormwater events. Without those, people will not, will not consider it.
This is something that I went through when I was working in coastal city because the county in this case did all of that. Everybody contributed to the county and signed up to a massive intergovernmental agreement that we would all pay a proportionate share, right? It was a formula for that, population and land mass included. But then when the county did it, they did exactly what you described and they went in with that LiDAR and they started to go through the entire county. And as you know, Florida is pretty much pancake, right? And there's a tendency to flood and get high tides and the whole nine yards. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we were looking at 1982 FEMA flood plan panel maps. I remember when they came out, I never remember how old that was and where I was working. And I remember getting it, somebody like Ross handed me and said, he goes, this is your responsibility, you deal with it. And I opened up that thing and I looked at some of my panels, right? Took me a while to figure that out, but that's how old those panels are. And now what they're looking at is they're looking to upgrade those. In Florida, where they went first, because it does have big issues, you know, and they're always a great test case, always a good test case. We went in and we were able to defend, you know, protection of the existing properties that were, you know, historically in the flood plain and those that were not. So that way, when the coastal flooding would happen, you know, and it wasn't on the ocean cycle, it's the coastal would come up during storm events and it would flood basically from the east, from the west to the east. And it would actually go, you know, toward the, toward the coastal highway. You know, we were able to keep properties out that were not historically in because we had the data. we had the data, right? And that is a real big issue, is you don't want properties to go in because from an insurance standpoint, it's not insurable, it's not billable, you know, and if you own something there, it's not very easy to sell. So that's the challenge that we're having, that's, you know, this is a solution, is to come up with a plan, whether we go alone, protect ourselves, or whether we as a community here in Rock Island County and Henry County work together to have a solution, maybe that by-state would oversee, given they're, they're much larger than us obviously.
Very much to be determined.
To be determined.
With this LiDAR approach, can that be combined with, when we get surveyors in-house or whatever, to create elevation certificates?
Absolutely.
Because we have a big issue with.
No, you can't create them.
No, LiDAR is not, is not. You can't use LiDAR, you still have to use a surveyor to do your.
Right, we could use those in combination that would reduce.
The data.
Because the concern is, we have like an area like Heritage, and we have all of these properties down there, and it is a hodgepodge of the people who are paying flood insurance, some of which need to be, and many of who, if they just go through this process and get the elevation certificate, they would get pulled out of it, or you have to file the rights up through the feds. But we could literally save our residents hundreds of thousands of dollars if we get those elevation certificates and pull however many out, and it automatically increases the value of those homes, the EAB goes up, the tax base, so, I mean, there's, there's all sorts of benefits to it, it's just the economies of scale, like people doing it one at a time, if you call a surveyor out and come and do your house, the cost isn't always, you know, because you don't know if you're going to actually pull your house or not. You may wind up paying 800 bucks and find out, oh yeah, you definitely need to pay it.
You are in the eighties.
So, so I didn't know if there was, that could be something, because Heritage isn't the only spot, we've got, we've got properties all up and down.
We're researching that, by the way.
And so if that's something that we could pursue.
Like explore it.
I talked with River Action about it, and they had said that they had some funds, but like, nobody was interested in using them. So that may be something where we want to partner with them.
Okay, I've got it.
We're gonna let him go, but we're gonna get back before you leave.
One other quick question on that, we're talking about kind of this reactive, what happens with flood. I still believe we should be proactive when it comes to stormwater. We don't have anywhere in our code where somebody is redeveloping a, the K-mark up on Avenue of the Cities, where they have to make the stormwater any better than how they found it, even though they're redeveloping the whole thing. And so we need to have something, we have, at least even in our, you don't have to go to necessarily 100%, but you have to increase the landscaping, that's in our code, but the.
Not in the safety of the impervious surface that run off from your property after adjoining property, we have no order.
Nothing, as long as you don't make it worse, you don't have to do anything. And so what I'd like to do is, I guess I'll make a motion that we direct staff to, as part of this, come back with some ordinance updates on how to be proactive in those redevelopments.
Your honor, we did.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Why are you second in that, Mr. Clerk? Discussion?
I would like to come in on that. We have taken that question up in the past and have proposed some alternatives, and I think Andy has actually spoken to you about this. Some of the alternatives that we came up with just weren't viable, you know, and then as task interference comes into play, we balls on the ground now, we pick the ball back up. But yes, that is something that is on our to-do list.
And I know from talking with Andy, like, some of it where, to do it, sometimes it's a hard decision, you're like, you're going to upset some people who are redeveloping. And I don't want to put staff in that position, we as the council should have to make that hard decision on where you move that needle to make improvements and then give you direction, rather than you guys going, hey, you should be telling people who want to redevelop this that they got to spend an extra X dollars. That should be something where we take that one.
Yeah, and I guess I would just say, till now, everything we've looked at has been a rebate or some kind of discount to their stormwater fee, and because our stormwater fees are so low, there's no, there's no way to incentivize it.
And so that's where it has, I think it has the ability to.
Okay, any further discussion on this motion, Mr. Smith?
As, as we did some clarity, as part of this meeting is part of which?
Well, if, if we're going to be putting together a stormwater master plan and those sorts of things.
So as part of the stormwater master plan, considering how we could.
Well, I, I think that we need to update our ordinance sooner than later, and then that way it will become part of this master plan.
So, in general understanding that, that we have two modes you can go, you can update it as part of code update to get it done ahead of a master plan, hopefully the calendar will work out that way, or you do it in conjunction with the master plan.
Well, I think it'd be part of the code update.
Okay, so that is the understanding, counsel, that it's part of the code update project?
Which is chapter 34.
And so, just so you know, that chapter 34 will be in front of you next week for a.
Information.
Information on just coming up, and then there will also be a stormwater ordinance change next week associated with some things you've already had in front of you.
Thank you. So, period, the more discussion I'll favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passed. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Okay, so this map here shows the locations where we're experiencing the discoloration due to the red water, and you can see in the blue, those are locations that have, we've resolved the problem, and then in the red, those are, and mostly the blue ones are the ones that we're removing through. The red ones are ones that are still in front of us. I will have, I will note that the 2022 CIP will allow us to remove six locations from any of the list.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, is that, is 26th, are we doing, replacing that whole run?
Yes.
As part of the 26th?
Yeah, and then there's some looping, if you recall, the, when they built the athletics center, over at the high school, there was some water main that was installed there.
Oh, okay, perfect.
And just looking at the map, I see where we have the affected customers. So there are, there are lines in place that are not affecting customers but could affect them in the future? Yeah, so the way this works, Alderman, is that these, the customers that are affected, these are, first of all, these are typically on dead-end water mains. And then number two is they're customers that are affected are usually at the very end of the dead end.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah. So when I see like a red line with no affected customers, oh, I see, it's because those are lines that are not at the dead end.
Or they just haven't gotten so bad that you got a customer complaining about it.
Yes, they may be affected, they just haven't complained about it. That and the fact that the ones in green are representative of the ones receiving these.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the wastewater side, this bypass sewer, actually, you all approved this construction contract, which is going to be constructed over a three-year timeframe. You approve phase one, which will start at the Heritage Pump Station shown in the lower right, and, you know, we'll spend about half of that contract this year. That will help to alleviate the sanitary sewer overflows that we have and junk there will hold on there. Then when the third phase of that project is complete, we will begin on the river driving receptor, and the same thing there, when the 39th Street Pump Station is activated, then we see overflows during wet weather along that corridor there. This, this problem goes all the way back, I was actually researching this when, to put together something for the, this congressional grant, and those of you that had been around long enough will remember that we used to hold River Fest down along.
Sewer Fest.
So can we bring them back? Once we fix this problem. This, this, these are some stormwater projects, the one on the left is the 49th Street or the Jacobs Pumping Station, and as Mr. Vitas had mentioned, we do intend to advance that project forward this year. And then the one in the center there is a project that's going to be completed this year, there's some severe erosion in the 29th block of 8th Street up by Hamilton School. To the right is a project that will reinforce what Mr. Vitas had mentioned about the outside engineering. We, I know I had discussed this project, it's on 19th Avenue, east of 34th Street, with Alderman, Walden, Alderman, lawyer, and Administrator Vitas, six months or so ago. And we're still trying to get the engineering done through a local engineer on that, so to be able to get that project up and running.
That just south of the, because I'm assuming that's just south of the Mid-American property, the one in the middle? What's happening there? Because I actually just got approached by somebody who owns that property on, just to the right of that circle, talking about possibly developing it, and so I was not aware that this.
There's just, there's a catch basin at the end of the street, all the water flows to the end, to that cul-de-sac or half cul-de-sac, and then the discharges are over at the hillside, and it's causing damage to the property.
Because I was wondering, because he said it, there's no way I can get to it, like, from eight, I have to go up nine, and that must be why.
Yeah.
So when.
Deeper being.
So when they do that, is it going to be?
Yeah.
Okay. Good enough.
And then another project that will be constructed and resolved next year will be some chronic wetness that exists on Fifth Avenue, east of 43rd Street. This is a problem we've dealt with within public works for decades where, because it's on the north-facing, the base of the north-facing bluff, we get icing in the wintertime, and it's, you know, it's great issues there. Okay, so here's the tabular view of what we intend to spend over the next three years for the water system. You can see our focus is on mostly cybersecurity and the water treatment plant, and then in the water distribution system, we're going to focus on some reconstructions and then also the red water locations.
Mr. Smith?
Is there any economies of scale of getting like the security cameras, I mean, there are only 20,000, you'd like to get them all done sooner?
We actually have partnered with police department to, to give backup of the system that they're using and the whole downtown corridor, so it'll be on the same network.
Vigilance.
Yeah, vigilance.
Vigilance. I mean, I figure we could probably figure out a way to do it sooner, you know, rather than bring a contractor in for 20 grand that, let us know.
Okay, and then sanitary sewers, kind of the same thing, if answering the question that I think Alderman Walden had earlier, if there was a project that would be pulled, it would be due to some cash flow issues, we talked to Carol on the wastewater side, and we may hold off on manhole lining, which is not shown on here, we're, we haven't done manhole lining historically, and to get that project off the ground, we prefer to have a more solid footing.
Mr. Smith?
The cash flow issue, I mean, how does that work? I mean, we've got reserves.
We do have reserves, but can, can I just have Carol be back to you on that?
Sure, yeah, please do, please.
Dominus.
And then I mentioned the de-watering improvements at North Slope and then South Slope, there's a big number there in 2024, which is in part what Carol will be talking to you about in, for South Slope. And then stormwater, this is a list that really comes out of the, a lot of the projects that Mike presented. And in addition, there are some projects that the Stormwater Utility has actually questioned more. And with that, that's the end of the utility's presentation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walden?
An overall question for Mike and/or Tony, we haven't talked a lot about tonight about where the funding sources are coming for these projects. So it would be interesting for future to know which ones are coming out of ARP money, which are coming out of MFT, which are just coming out of general funds. That helps us keep us aligned on where we're spending that money.
And also for me, it would be really helpful if I could see the overall delta change, right, from what we've budgeted for all these projects, and what's, if anything, bumping it up over that number, because you've noted some of the projects are coming in more expensive. I just, somebody doing that math for us quickly would be a helpful way to look at it for this particular year.
When would you like that?
Whenever you can get it to me, soon.
As soon as we get, as soon as we get the projects out prepared, then we get the actual hard numbers.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there are a few that are waiting out there. I mean, this is all just with a look towards either budget amendments or the future budget for next year, so it's not a rush item, it's just a way to look at it that is helpful to me, is the overall delta change, if there is one, from what we've budgeted for safety and what things are coming in there.
Will you do a budget versus bid report?
Thanks, thanks for the title. Let's not the terminology.
When is the pavement evaluation system coming?
Roughly about two to three months, we'll have the report.
That's going to be significant, because I know, sitting around this table, each one of us know of a certain road that we would like to see if it's going to make it or not.
For an alley.
Any place you drive a lot, we all have that road that we want to see it's going to make or not. So, in other words, hold that road and try to see where it breaks. That dead end up by J. Dams is getting done, so you're fine. No, actually, I've got one in Massacre Ward heading to Sam's, to the fourth ward now, so.
All right, are we ready for Brian? Thank you.
Anything, Mayor, Council?
Switching gears a little bit, I would say, because the library has a couple of capital recovery projects happening this year, might be just a quick summary of what's going on with those. First of all, the property adjacent to the library that was purchased last year, just to share a little bit about what's happened with this today, the library, last year, focused groups, and conducted a community survey to gather feedback as part of the early stages of building our own strategic plan. And of course, of each of those, those focus groups, and the survey was dedicated to asking community feedback specifically on what they'd like to see with this one acre of property. Much of the feedback that we received from those responses had related elements to it. There are a lot of things like outdoor space, outdoor seating, green spaces, gardens, areas for outdoor programs, small, small stage for events, and we're really happy to hear that, because those ideas tend to align with what the library board was thinking, and that's an outdoor extension of the library, basically. So, as you can imagine, there's a lot that's been written and a lot of information out there about the positive impact of outdoor public places, and then libraries can get involved with that and the development of those places, whether they're gardens or their plazas or outdoor program spaces, they just, they become great places for engagement and learning and just communal, overall community pride. So, the photos that I have on the screen there.
They're old.
They're old, and they were, they were taken two weeks ago, which is old now. So if you've driven past the library and past a day and a half or so, the lot looks a little bit different now. Thank you to our friends in the public works department, the garage that was there was taken down yesterday, and the house came down today.
Oh, cool.
So the lot is considerably different, much more spacious than it did before, so possibilities are certainly there for that. But before demolition happened with this property, the land board was very interested in reusing and saving as much as they could from the house. They worked with Habitat for Humanity to save doors and drawers and fixtures from the house, even down to the knobs, those were taken under there. Last week, I had a resident contact me to ask if they could pull up the rhubarb plants that were coming out of the backyard and transplant those, and those were saved. Even the police department was able to do a couple of training exercises at the house, too. So the house served the community well, the city. So now that, after this week, once the demolition is done, we'll have a blank canvas to work with, a little bit with this property, go for the library board's. Go for the library board's to be to use this year to come up with a development plan for for the land. And they've already started taking steps towards that. Library Board has a building and grounds committee that meets on a monthly basis. They've been talking about a development plan, and then they report back to the full board for even more discussion with that. So the timeline in the city's strategic plan for this is to have a development plan finalized by the first quarter of next year. And if we can do that, that's going to give us an opportunity to have potentially a project ready to go by spring or fall, start spring or summer of next year. Of course, right now, it's it's really early. I don't have anything definitive that I can share with you right now. But I would love for the opportunity to come back and share with you a little bit more, give you a bit of information.
Exciting.
Yeah.
Their lively discussions.
And I just I have had a resident reach out wondering what's going on. This was many weeks ago now. But, you know, people are interested in what's going on. So I know you all do a good job with your social media presence. But, you know, anything you can do to continue to share how that's processing, I think would be helpful for that. Right. And then what now what?
Yeah, we put one out yesterday that had just started construction, but yeah, we've got got that. We actually installed a really cool time lapse camera before this happened. So we'll be able to have a nice little video of the struggle. Basically everything. And then the the other capital improvement project that we got to run on, I'm sure that you're aware of, is our apartment replacement. The the replacement of this was approved by council earlier this year. The current unit has been in service, as it says, for the past sixteen years as original for the building. But right now, it requires daily restarts. So the new unit is scheduled to be installed, I believe, in October of this year. So we're gonna have to to work through the summer with our current unit, but we've found the ways to to work around that a little bit. So once that's installed, we'll be very excited. I provide some cool air for the building.
Well, Brian, with the manual start, I envision you out there like pulling.
It's almost like. His right arm is there.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am here to touch on our Public Works maintenance projects, facilities projects. I'm not going to touch on these very long. We've had lengthy discussions to date already. But as a holistic C I P, these are capital projects that we have coming down the pipeline. One-stop shop. Of course, it's an ARPA-funded project. And before that, you guys are aware of our our chances there. This is the garage expansion, again, discussed most recently. City Hall overview. Central fire station. There are, there is an R F Q being worked on in the process right now to send out for a request for qualifications for designers and a study to do a study and a design of our of our needs in the space.
Does does that include the other three stations? I I've just had some feedback once they started talking about the central station that there had been some concerns about some of the other ones or what the timeframe is for that.
I can speak to that. I had the opportunity with the fire chief to take a tour of those three facilities about a week ago. I think it was a Monday or something. It was about a week ago. So we spent half a day going through each and every one of the stations. There's no question that that they need some maintenance done to them. They need some updating done to them, updating the secondary little maintenance issues. But in having gone through them all, I mean, for the most part, they're in pretty nice shape. They're a little bit on a small side in terms of the staffing and how the living quarters are arranged. A little cramped. But, I mean, there's desks in there that I haven't seen since the seventies. So there's things that do need to happen. There's furnishing issues. There are main general maintenance and upkeep issues. You know, and then there's some modernization that should probably happen in every one of those stations. And then that's something that the fire rescue department, along with Sarah and Joe, are going to bring back. I want that information for future discussions with this council in terms of what they.
Yeah, I I would like to put out there that this issue of deferred maintenance, whether it's roads that we want to see done that haven't been able to get done, or it's our buildings, the prioritization of those needs is very important. And and you know, we have chronological guides for some of that. But if we're running into issues of getting contractors for some of these deferred things, you know, that will then slow that down, we shouldn't wait, we shouldn't pause on the other building maintenance type issues that we might be able to get the contractors for and, you know, swapping out the prioritization. So I just deferred maintenance is a bane of my existence in any position I've been in because it comes by you, the owner, right? And so whether it's all three or it's the big one, you know, as long as we can think chronal, think about the balance of what's getting done, when, because of what variables, then then maybe we can take a bite out of deferred maintenance at other stations.
And and what I want to add to that is also us thinking strategically. I don't want us to say, okay, we're looking at central station. But we're not looking, what does Moline look like twenty-five years from now? I know we keep talking about developing south of the airport. Well, when we do that, there needs to be fire coverage.
Correct.
South of the airport. And so what does that look like? I know, like, you know, Rock Island's got kind of their approach. You know, our is our approach going to be, we've got four in town, and then we'll build a fifth one out there? Is it, can we strategically place three in town and have the fourth one just south of the roof? I mean, I I don't know the answer to that, right? You know, because you've got to have reaction time and all those things. But I think that we need to, before we make a decision on the location of this and whatever, we've got to come into an idea of what the the long-term strategic strategic plan is. Because otherwise, we're going to want to build in something. And then, you know, eleven years from now, when some some big developer wants to do something south of there, it'd be like, oh, crap, I wish we hadn't thought about that.
They're going to pay for it anyhow.
Well, I mean, and so, yeah, so but but to make sure that we've got the the coverage that we need.
Yeah, no, which is being do is basically respond to the response study. And and that's part of what we're looking at longer term for for fire rescue. Because, you know, as technology changes and equipment changes, you know, the industry changed since the time that we built our last fire station. And two of them were built at the same time. Although I think four and three were built simultaneously. You know, and two was actually built when the mall happened. So until that time, you had a central station that existed in the seventies. And you had two old stations either in the town back when we had very active, you know, industry downtown. Once the industry left, everything changed. So that that whole dynamic has changed. So as we look at at central station today, you know, where would it best be placed? Because obviously downtown's not going away, and there's a shifting focus to bring a lot of residential back in, right? And that impacts not only the location of the station, its response time, but the equipment that's needed at those stations. And we have one, they have one ladder. One ladder is, guess where? Down by the mall.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's where it's at. So, you know, as we look to the other side of the river, it becomes a whole nother discussion, too. And it's not just fire safety, but then it's also police response time, you know? And then working intermunicipally with, you know, other adjoining cities, as well as the airport authority as well. Because they have a fire rescue department there, which we don't either keep or Monday, Sunday, or we don't know. So there's a lot to be talked about when it comes to.
I just want to make sure whatever this R F Q and whatever these plans take all of that stuff in consideration when we make it a single win or a win-win.
And the R F Q has given qualifications to do that study and do that so we can make sure we implement all of these needs when we when we set that scope of work up. Well, yeah. And as far as deferred maintenance, I know we have a facility bond that is fairly new in our budgeting process. And we're trying to get to those deferred things. We've done R O S, we've done the Public Works, we've done the refund. The library, Maclennan came up last year. You guys remember that one and all that? So we do have that bond available, but we are trying to get better at the deferred maintenance for sure. Do you know some parking ramps are in that? Matrix? So the facility bond is set up for occupied buildings, occupied facilities. So there's a chargeback from the department. Community Economic Development uses the entire first floor and their charge per square footage of the of the space. My recollection is no.
You sure or not? We should probably look at all of that stuff. I mean, because the check's going to come due at at some point. But with every building that we've got, I mean, whether it's shelters, whether it's, you know, parking decks or or whatever. And so we need to make sure that all that stuff is, because otherwise, we're going to find out thirty years from now, one of those decks needs to be replaced. And we're going to say, oh, crap, we haven't put anything aside for anything.
Step into more of my realm here, the snow removal analysis and work plan. Last October, I came to you and discussed our snow operations, needs in order to fulfill or expand our our operations more quickly, kind of mimicking the services we had gotten there before. So this this top chart is what I presented in October. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. This is a, this is a snow report for snow days, our history dating back to two thousand sixteen seventeen. Column on the left is years. We had a very mild winter, as everybody. Going to vote for that. It was appreciated. But anyway, it kind of accumulates the stats. It kind of shows the comparisons from from years in the past. And we had thirteen events, eighteen and a half inches of snow. Goes through our, keep in mind, salt purchase is what's purchased, maybe not what was laid down. But we did, we have to buy, we have to get into a contract to buy minimum amounts. We can see our stand time over time. And the new numbers at the bottom are the contractual services. Last year, we had two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars contracted out in services with private contractors. This year, that seventy-nine thousand, six hundred dollars was contracted out to mimic six additional employees in Public Works. So what those six additional employees would have done within our snow plan is how we try to deploy those contracted services.
So is that we hired six and then this was mimicking another six, or we just hadn't hired those six?
Well, yeah, we never really got all the way up to our six that were that were approved. We're still too short of getting all those in with the shuffling back and forth. But this contractual services, we took a section of our snow plan out that would take six Public Works employees and gave that to the contractor. It was way for us to compare, yeah, so we could, if we had those six employees, didn't have to contract it out, that would have covered their services that they provided.
But then the extra four, were they then just?
They were in our whole plan. Yeah, they were in our whole plan.
So it's not like it's. Just then it's not about, because we had more people working and.
We asked for twelve, or we needed twelve to fill that lineup. So we got the six, or we got close to them anyway, we filled. We backed over to other people. We had we had volunteers throughout, we always have, you know, we did the best we could. But that number, that seventy-nine thousand dollars is what, we took six trucks worth of worth of routes out, basically, and gave that to the contractors so that we could see what their cost would be. So in a in a year like we had this year, we we spent seventy-nine thousand dollars, which would have pretty easily been covered with those six additional people in-house.
So what you're comparing is the cost of six additional personnel versus the eighty thousand dollars. Bottom line. So instead of having twelve additional employees, we went up to six, we built four, budgeted for six. And then we used contracting, so.
Over the buck, okay.
And we just happened to only come in four.
Right, and we filled that throughout the year. And, you know, we had a late snow season, so it worked out pretty good. But we definitely carved out a six-person portion of our plan for the contractor.
In the in the future, I'd like to see this this analysis, but rather than salt purchased, salt used?
Yeah, and there is some salt used down in the bottom.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because otherwise, you you wind up, hey, we're refilling because there was a ton last year.
Yeah.
And but we didn't use that much. That way, we can actually maybe start to analyze what our cost is per inch or per event or or those sorts of things. Because because obviously, we spent, you know, under five hundred thousand dollars for this year. But it was also half the number of snow days and a third of, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And and that salt one's really kind of hard, you know, we have, we know how much we use, but it is kind of hard at that point because of the rolling and figuring, we've got to try to hit what we've contracted to purchase, which we do in the spring. I don't know, we're here pretty soon for purchasing this year. We want to buy as much as our domes are full.
And there's other times where we get an ice storm that winds up.
And the estimate would never be perfect on the salt used.
But just, no, it would be something easier to tell you.
Yeah, and we can definitely add used salt in there, and we know what it is. Yeah, I wasn't really concentrating on the cost of the contracted services that that would have been filled in by those additional saves. And then down below is a is a breakdown of the contracted services. So they gave us a, you know, a voice for that, and we kept track of that. So this is what I presented to you in October, the annual cost of twelve additional employees broken down. We added six laborers, six M D Os. Total cost plus the benefits for this year's rate for two thousand twenty-two is eight hundred fifteen thousand dollars total. So half of that, we had the additional six, is four hundred and four hundred and seven and some change. That's that's where we're looking to show some offset costs. You know, the seventy thousand we spent in contractual services would offset this cost a little bit, you know, because we we bring that in-house. Currently, some streets and sanitation has thirty-four full-time budgeted employees. Currently have three vacancies, two of those that we're trying to fill on a sanitation drive we need to replace. Parks Maintenance currently has thirteen budgeted full-time employees, there is zero vacancies in in parks right now. Some additional costs and things to consider when taking on hiring up these six additional employees. And I'm sure there are others, and I know we can all come up with them. But some that are that come to mind is the fleet investment in transportation. We do have a during third shift, during snow season, we have enough vehicles for everybody. When we're when we're all first shift and we're fully, everybody's here, we would. Transportation to and from job sites is going to be a challenge. So we will need an additional fleet investment at some point after we grow into this. Specialized equipment, if we decide to get into, and if we're capable of doing other types of C I P projects, whether it be asphalt laydowns. You know, we we could always use some additional equipment as far as mini excavators, skid steers, depending on what type of construction we're going to be doing. Recruitment challenges and retirements, that's been an ongoing struggle, and it will continue to be. Employee parking down at Public Works is fairly reasonable, easy to accommodate. And, you know, with our expansion plans, it shouldn't be a problem. And then I just want to, new C D L training requirements. You know, the federal government has increased the requirements for C D L training in order to acquire a C D L license. All of our all of our positions down at Public Works require a class of C D L. So there's going to be some, maybe some investments we need to make in our boys upfront to get that training done for them so they can get those C D Ls if if we're looking to make and continue to make that a requirement.
There are, yes. I mean, as we think about on the on the personnel, we had the six contracted and the six we brought in. In order to accommodate that stuff. I know we had talked about looking toward the future, potentially bringing that full twelve in. And I'd like to see us get to that point. But I think my concern would be looking at and saying, okay, but what is the plan? What are what are they filling in? Oh, is that on the next slide?
Coming up. Coming up.
Sorry, I remember the last slide ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, just briefly want to touch on some of the things that we've completed with the six already. You know, we don't even have six, we have four. We had a still snow season, too, so we've, you know, kind of jumped some of these things. But we did have an improved snow removal service, I think, without a doubt. We had many compliments from residents. I know we had received notices from you folks when you received good news from our snow removal services. So, you know, that is a, that is definitely a benefit. We were able to get out and clean entire medians this year. It's something, it's a maintenance project we had not been able to do for four or five years. We just didn't have the time. We just didn't have the time and, uh, capacity. Uh, we've improved our routine sign maintenance. We made a concerted effort recently to get out there and update the signs that are on the streets as compared to what the ordinance reads. You know, as part of this ordinance cleanup, we had a lot of, uh, signs where in our ordinance, it says no parking here to here, but they, the signs weren't there. So we, we're putting them in, or if they're, if it's needed to be brought back, we're taking them to traffic committee and going through the process to either eliminate it or, or, um, update. Our small equipment maintenance, our, our staff will work on their, uh, you know, small things that, that we can help out with, you know, sharpening mower decks, uh, mower blades, you know, the, uh, chainsaws, weedy, or some of those little things that they're able to get into, uh, to be prepared for springtime. Um, we were able to assist with some facility and sanitation backup. And, and then also, we really did have a very effective and simple multi-department cooperation of the snow plan this year. Utilities had a set, uh, you know, their, their, uh, the people were set, they knew when they were gonna be here. We didn't have to flex their schedule the thirds. We were able to extend their first shift hours either before or after their, their normal shift. We had a very good, uh, cooperation within our organization because of the flexibility that the extra, uh, employees gave us. So here's where we're gonna get, get into what we can do. So what I'm gonna ask you tonight is for, um, our Public Works, our supplemental staff that we have now, those additional people that we have, we want to dedicate a crew, a contracted crew more or less, to work alongside of our sidewalk program contractor. And we want to try to hammer out some of the backlog of trippers that we have in our seventy-five, twenty-five program. We have, we have projects dating back to two thousand eighteen that within our normal CIP program, we are not able to get to. We run out of funds before we get through all those folks. So, uh, ARPO was, uh, the council head allocated three hundred thousand dollars for sidewalk improvements throughout the city. I would like to have a Public Works crew, uh, work through the engineering department, through that program, to, uh, work on these projects and try to get as many of these backlog programs as we can. And what I want to do in this, in this program this summer is analyze how much we spent versus how much square footage we got done. Compare that to what our prices are, we're getting from contractors. We can see going forward, if we still only want to put a hundred and, or two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I think our sidewalk program adds into, and contractors get this much done, but we want to continue that investment, but Public Works in-house staff can get this much done. We're either gonna, we're either gonna get more done for the same amount of money or we'll get, uh, get, it's gonna, it's gonna offset that cost.
Question about that, uh, if, you know, big fan, um, if we do this with the, uh, you know, the art renovation, A, does that help? Do salaries come out of that or is we just talk about materials and engineering? Because I'm imagining at that point, materials are so much cheaper than the labor plus materials of a contractor.
So, so that's gonna be part of the analysis at the end of the year. We're only gonna pay for materials and equipment needs, we're gonna rent equipment if we need to, or rent it to, to complete the program. The, the labor's already paid for, you know, it's already budgeted this year, those, those additional six that were approved last year.
Right, but if you're comparing outside to inside, you've got to put that other three hundred and forty thousand dollars or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, in a, in a, in a on-paper analysis, yeah, the labor cost would be included.
Right.
So.
But it's not gonna cost us.
So, the way I read this was you were looking for another six for in-house. But what you're actually saying is, you can keep it as is right now to, to see what we can get done, do some data analysis. And then would it be for another year or two that you would have, you know, an answer to, do you really want to ask for six more?
So, the, the twelve came strictly from the organ into our snow plan?
Correct.
Okay, so we got those six, we contracted out the six.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not asking for six unless you, unless, unless what we go here right now, you're comfortable and said, we need those six. We're going to need them. I, I am very comfortable coming back with an analysis of our work that we can do in-house to show the, the improvements or the, the lengthening of that.
I'm not suggesting anything without analysis, but I don't do that. Um, I just was clarifying the timeframe that you're looking at for your list.
If, if we don't, if, if we're not, uh, we don't get the six hired before next snow season, we're still gonna be contracting out those services to keep those levels of service, um, where we're at. So, so it's gonna be kind of up to the council to determine when or if that's an additional folks.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, I, I think this approach, step by step, I think this was good. We'll, we'll, we'll get to that six, we're direct four now. I share a, it's, uh, joy, getting more sidewalks, uh, up and done. And I truly believe we're going to see, wow, we can really stretch our, our dollar doing this. And then we'll get an idea of like, how much more do we have? You know, is this gonna take us two years, three years, five years to catch up to where we think we really need to be? Or you may, you may discover other things and then all of a sudden, okay, now we need to give it to the, the other six need. But I think until we do this analysis, see the, the stuff, I think staying with the six we got right now is the prudent.
Would, um, Ali's the other question eventually, like, proving this is successful, alleys are big sidewalks, right?
Yeah, so we lead him right in. So re, uh, yeah, that leads right into my next, uh, little topic there, yes. Additional things we could have performed in-house. You know, we're not gonna take on the entire patching program, that's not, we're not capable of that, even with twenty people, who's not. But we can, we can, uh, we can do joint crack seal, ceiling, that's a maintenance program in our CIP project. Uh, we could help out with some utility street patching, alley reconstructions, parking lot maintenance, inlet and hedge basin replacement. We used to do that in-house, we used to replace, you know, part of our storms, you know, part of our storm network, we would replace those. Uh, the other sidewalk programs, we're only asking to help with the trippers right now to, to get that analysis going. We could, if, if that is very successful, maybe that's a program that comes out of the CIP and is done in-house. You know, so, 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 so those are some of the other additional things we can look at. Can't do them all, but we can look at some.
Yeah, and, and that's sort of where I was getting to when I jumped ahead. Thinking about how we have the, basically how we pay, are paying for that staff and, you know, we're running that additional six, that four hundred thousand dollars, that they're, it's got that year-round cost that we, you know, snow was about a hundred thousand, that'll likely go up in, in future years if we keep on the same path, um, in a, a more robust season, obviously, but, uh, just really understanding, having a plan for this is exactly how we're gonna save and basically pay for that out of, yeah, the programs we take over. Because the one other concern I would have a few of the six people is, we're having trouble getting everything we need hired and billed and staff right now. From more, open to that problem is gonna help us at this point, yeah, because we need to get the maintenance up done.
Mr. Wolfman?
I'm all in on the trippers and sidewalks too. Uh, and part of your evaluation, just keep in mind to do the evaluation of the work the same way we would hold the contractors. If there is faulty work by our folks, our inspectors who have said this needs to be redone, it needs to be redone and reflect in the actual cost. So that's something we have not done in the past. We've run out, done sidewalks, we've done alleys, we've done inlets, but there's no inspection process on that where a contractor's held to one standard. Our people weren't, weren't held to that. To make it a true apples to apples, they've got to be held to that standard.
It is very clear that this program is Public Works staff, a couple of Public Works contractor working for engineering. We are working through the inspector that is overseeing this program strictly, so they're, they're guiding the work, they're inspecting the work as, when it exactly as like you might be saying. Thank you.
Mr. Wolfman?
Thank you. Will you also be able to evaluate the things that we, we don't hire contractors for, like the extra stone grinding on the back that we're gonna have cleaner bike paths? Because we'll do more street cleaning and loads of streets.
You know, I, I made that list and that's on this next slide as a, just a, you know, it's rare, rare that we down to twill and thumps. We never are, we always have things, we have tasks that not only we don't get to as much as we'd like to, but are about to come in.
Because they bring a lot of value as well, so.
Absolutely, and again, if we don't take anything out of the CIP to offset cost of these employees, we are going to put these employees onto some of these additional things, these unseen, you don't see the dollars, you know, but it does improve our, our services, improves our parks. Uh, all those things are going to be benefits without cost savings, but they are gonna be benefits and they're gonna be realized with additional staff.
My question, um, I guess is maybe from Mr. Wolfman's. I believe that, you know, right, the right-sized staff can help us get the services that we need, correct? But I guess I would need to be educated on what is a normal-sized Public Works staff along these lines for a city our size, right? Because for, for me, it's also a balance of this labor-type position, you know, uh, in Public Works as well as the director positions. I'm the last person to want administrative load, I want people doing the work down at the ground level, make sure we have those filled. But I guess I need to understand the right size, I, because we, we chose this size because of the snow plan and other things we could get done, right? Saw some benefits to that, but I, I would like to understand for our size city, if that makes sense.
Sure, and, and some of that's variable, you know, a lot of, a lot of municipalies do in-house concrete work, in-house asphalt work. That, that staff is gonna be loaded because of those services. And we're, we're only gonna do sidewalks and then some maintenance and then all these other things, you know, so, I, I agree, it's.
I think what, I think what defines it is the service levels that you set. And, and, and as a part of the service levels, routine service level versus contracted services that you're looking for, you know? You can stretch your asphalt dollars a long way and get a lot more roads resurfaced if you actually do the work in-house. And I know that because I've managed that in other cities. And it was done because of this catch-up, this, this horrendous problem of trying to keep up with deferred maintenance through the years. So, I mean, that's a part of that whole discussion, you know, and that's something that Joe and I have talked about literally since.
That would be, it, it's not too difficult to show in some chart, like for X service level, you need this many employees for a city our size. For B service level, you need, you know, and here's why. I, I would appreciate that understanding.
And, and with that also have the seasonal, because we also have that weird seasonality. I mean, if you're doing all the asphalt stuff, you know, what are you doing with them when they're not doing it?
November to, yeah.
But obviously, this isn't a immediate need, it's when you're taking this time to analyze, yes.
I just wanted, you know, to say these guys don't pull the thumbs. We get these additional six employees, that might, that number might go up, I mean, I, I don't know. But, uh, what if, like during winter months, I mean, could you give me a list of the things these guys would be doing in the winter months?
Yeah, we could, we could.
Because I don't have a box, no.
No, you don't have a box all the time, but you, you still drill potholes, you know, still, they do that. We do clean medians at that time of year, if we can't get to them, if there's not snow on them, uh, we do.
Replace signs that go down.
We have a lot of sign where. We have a lot of, if you can get out there and sweep, you know, we can, we can still sweep gutters, you know, so there, there's still work to do. We definitely still down in the wintertime, um, but there's still, there's still work.
But the issue for still remains recruitment, back to your point, that will, that will determine quite a bit. But I, I'm pleased to hear that you're taking a slow approach to analyzing the situation.
Yeah, I, it's never asking for six more people, you know, I mean, it's, 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 it's not something I take lightly that we just want to jump into. We want to make sure that they're set up for success, so.
I think you, I think, you know, kudos to these guys because they've really been proactive. I mean, from, from the time I first met Joe and Ron and, uh, knowing that staffing was down, I mean, there were issues, there were a lot of issues. They've been very proactive and they've been doing a great job, they've proved it through the winter, they did it through the snow, the leaf removal program, uh, the street maintenance that they're doing right now, I see it, you know, I drive around like much, that's the same way all of you do. I see the potholes getting fixed because I know the ones I always try to avoid, you know, I don't want to break my rims, you know, but it does happen. I can see the change that's happened and it is significant, I think it's to their credit, you know?
Can you paint further?
Yeah, some of the wintertime stuff we do, like, we can dig it stump ground in the wintertime, we can, we can cut trees more twice, that's a great time to get them in the tree. We, we have, we have tree.
Corrections.
Yeah, we're being, we're being, wintertimes, we can touch a lot. Um, but I, I just also wanted to identify some things we have coming up that we have never had to do. We've got the I-74 landscape maintenance, and we are responsible for, we're going to be responsible for the bike trail on I-74 with Pratt and Door. Um, that is a new entity that we are responsible for, uh, the bike and pump track down below, we go through with that part, that's coming, that's been in this discussion. And that's the easiest one to get in there right now, we'll have maintenance on that project. Parklets are a new thing downtown. If somebody hits one, guess who's getting the phone call? You know, it's, Jeff Manis is great at getting them out there and doing all that, and I mean, kudos to him, it's a great program. But when, when it gets burned, you go on the weekends. Parklets outside in downtown where we don't have somebody working. End up seeing them up in town, or, or, wherever it could be. I don't know, down in the west, it just, it just always ends up doing it that way, so. That's really all I had, again, a lot of, lot of things that I wanted to make everybody aware, things that we do, we try to do, we can do better, we can improve, and then some other offsetting things, cost offsetting, we could try to take on in-house, so.
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you.
Last but not least.
Uh, just to kind of hit on Joe, go ahead, Joe, the same tree maintenance.
You're both your word choice there.
Keep going with what he was saying, tree maintenance, uh, stumps, and then all the new facilities and the amount they were adding to park maintenance, park maintenance is under, um, so. Is there a laser pointer in here by chance?
Yeah.
Go first, the stream.
Uh, so we'll start with some of the smaller projects that we've got going on, uh, re-ropping the, the large restroom that's down by the two, uh, park shelters down on Ben Butterworth, and also the six smaller shelters. Some of the covered picnic tables in, um, the last four or five years have been re-roofed, but this kind of takes care of the remaining that we've got multiple shingles missing, um, from, even back from the duration of it, whatnot. Those two large shelters have not been rented since, uh, Philo was doing the construction down on Ben Butterworth. Probably our two most popular shelters, so we're really excited to get those, um, roped and get those back open. I'm gonna skip the second one for just a minute, the picnic table and garbage can upgrades. We're also replacing, um, the wood picking tables on Ben Butterworth Parkway. We've kind of got a three- or four-year plan to start replacing picnic tables, kind of similar to what we're doing with the benches on Ben Butterworth, but replacing picnic tables and getting towards, um, something that's gonna be long-term and less maintenance, um, as well. Replacement of the chemical controller at Riverside, um, that's something that we're, we're working on this year. What we're switching into is from a tablet system to a liquid system. Um, this is not only gonna be safer for staff, but it's also a huge cost saver. Almost forty percent less, um, cost compared to what we spent last year, um, for the same chemicals, including new chemical feeders, control systems, um, that we can control with our phones if we'd like. Um, and what we're switching to is what we're going to be using going forward with the, the upgrades as well. And then, um, the ceiling repair at the mausoleum was great, um, that you guys approved. An emergency repair with the mausoleum, we were able to get that done in November, um, great, but we do have some ceiling repair work inside. And then, just to, real quick, the twenty-one annual reports on there, a lot of great projects that were completed, I just wanted to hand those out, we're pushing that out next week. But, um, a lot of great projects, including tip of all, Carson's Park, roof repair, and kind of leads me into, um, going forward. All right, so this parking lot down on Ben Butterworth, I wish I would have taken the picture the following day because then it rained later that day. And usually, there's water on both sides of the parking lot, and this part, this has been something that Park Works wanted, has wanted to do since, I believe, two thousand nineteen is the earliest of discussions I've seen. It's been pushed off because of COVID and then, um, some construction problems last year. But they actually have put up the parking lot close signs, um, today, and we'll be working on that soon to follow, so that's gonna be great. They're shifting, uh, where parking is, so when you park, you pull in and you face the river instead of facing, um, the street, yes.
Eric, are they gonna do any fill on the north side there where the pond is? And you can fix that parking lot, but you need it filled back in where it's eroded from the floods or it's gonna continue the pond. They're gonna do some mud grass work on that side. They're gonna do some mud grass work on that other side. Thank you.
Little, little stripe these spots.
Yeah, we actually just talked about that today. Asphalting overlay at Moline Memorial. This is my second favorite, um, project that we have going on. One of the first things I noticed during my interview a couple of years ago, um, how many people use this, um, as a park? You know, trails, uh, people walking through with children, their dogs, uh, it was really exciting to. This is another project that was gonna happen in 21, and it was gonna be a steel cover first. And then we were able to budget the extra money to asphalt overlay. And it did come under budget. It was budgeted at $280,000 and came in at $215,000. The parking lot was budgeted $100,000 and came in at $77,000. Thanks to engineering for helping us put those components and specs together. Last year for it, was able to, uh, get those going in the next couple of weeks.
And, and I think we're gonna do a connection on the bike path up to 47th that needs construction.
Yeah, that doesn't, uh, that didn't, didn't make the slide, I guess. So we've had some public feedback on, um, getting into the park. And they're like, well, we cut through this area, um, are we able to, you know, add a, a logging path in there? And make some, the entrance on 34th Street. 34th Street, um, wider, so you don't, you know, hit the curb every time you cut through and, and just, um, you know, make this, um, a great park. Slash cemetery for Moline. There'll be some other things coming out this spring about the cemetery. Uh, we're gonna be adding some signage and talking about if you walk this path, this is how far you go. And also adding some small art pieces to kind of really round out, um, the cemetery and, and kind of going back to the history of what this area was. Before, before all the houses were. And I don't think these pictures give it, uh, just, uh, how bad these roads actually are. These were seal coated back between 2008, 2010. And, uh, asphalting is gonna last a long, so. Stevens Park upgrades, this was presented last September, October. Originally on the left-hand side, instead of going, the courts going up and down, um, I had them going left to right. So I don't really know my directions. But after working with engineer, or working with Shive about this, uh, it wasn't possible to go left to right. So we went, um, up and down, I guess. Yes, thank you.
Vericon Park.
Vericon, thank you. So originally we were putting three there and then two, um, down by the basketball. After talking with, um, some of the people that live in Stevens Park, um, and talking with one of our park board members and kind of working together on this. We decided to go with two on the left-hand side instead of three. There's some benches there, um, a lot of the members of the community love the older trees there. We would've pretty much had to wipe all that out. And so we decided to stick with the two, um, soccer courts. So the ones on the left-hand side are two soccer courts. Um, what you don't see here is, um, some sidewalks that, um, connect from where the bus stop is. And in some final, um, details a lot, a lot on that. Where also, they're gonna be blue and green courts, um, so we actually just finalized that today. And which, um, we'll take it back for, to Park Board at the end of the month for a little bit more feedback and then bid it out first of April. And then, so the, the two courts. Yes, beginning of May. So we got two, um, sole basketball, or two soccer courts on left-hand side. And then the two other ones are dual soccer and basketball. And I drove by that, um, park today and there were kids playing basketball and more kids waiting. So that's gonna be heavily used, all four courts. I mean, uh, several times a week I see people playing, um, soccer in that green space. They live three blocks from the park, so it's gonna be, um, a great addition. Where also what you don't see is sidewalks connecting the two basketball slash soccer courts, um, to the sidewalk. And then we're also adding a park, um, uh, a sidewalk from that parking lot as well. Now, this was originally budgeted and approved by Park or City Council for $651,900. There's probably gonna be roughly eighty to a hundred thousand dollars left because we're not doing that additional court. One of the ideas that have come up, that was presented to City Council during this, was replacing the, uh, the playground. We have a couple of the features that we have not replaced, um, because they are eight to ten thousand dollars a piece. And, um, Game Time, who, the last couple of RFQs that we've done for playgrounds, they've, they've gotten it. They have, the last three or four years have had a grant program. At the end of the year, they will match fifty percent for the cost of a playground. And this playground is probably two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand on the playground based off the size. So they could match, you know, seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, um, which this project was budgeted, I believe, in '23. So that could be an option as well. It belongs to the neighborhood group. We can present some more ideas to them as well. There's been great feedback, um, so far.
The course to the left running north-south, you have the extra money, uh, and I think it's a wonderful idea for the playground. But another wonderful idea in my hand, we've only got one opportunity in the entire Quad Cities for deck hockey, and that's at that door. Can those two courts that are running north-south on the left side be utilized for ramming for deck hockey?
I think any of these four courts could, and, uh, the courts that we're gonna be talking about at Riverside.
Okay, good. That's all.
Yeah, two caveats with that. There, there's a slight difference, though, I think, with deck hockey.
Yeah, there's, uh.
Deck hockey, yeah, the, the, the net is forward of the back, uh, back wall. And so you can do the puck around just like in real hockey. Where these, the openings and the goals will be on the back line, so it won't be exactly deck hockey.
But we're still gonna try to program.
But, 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 you know, I, I used to play equivalent to deck hockey on courts like this and, you know. Purists might get upset, but it does the same thing. So, uh, but the, the second thing, um, because one of these things was that we're utilizing the TIP funds for, for all of that stuff. I, you know, if, if we can get and leverage that with the playground stuff, that by doing it this year or where the case is. Please come back with a recommendation. We'll, uh, we'll advance it from the TIP. Because that, that should be eligible for the subney. It's not repairs or whatever, it's a new equipment, so.
Yeah, um, so talking to Cunningham Recreation, the company that sells Game Time. They've done it the last three or four years to keep their workers in the factory over through the Christmas time. They, they won't know till September, October, um, but, you know, by the time we get this project out, it starts, you know, this will probably be a September, October, um, finish line. So the playground to me, I mean, seems like a slam dunk. If we're gonna, we're gonna put in a hundred grand and they're gonna give us a hundred grand, then why not?
Eric, what kind of plans do you have for the parking lot? At least a top three blacking, I call it. I realize you're not, I go to black and then striate it would be nice for that, for that parking lot.
I just talked to Shive about this today. Uh, we are gonna do an alternate for some, some patching that won't come out of TIP fund. Cause it's not eligible. The reason why, you know, all those parking lots could be replaced. The, the tip over the lifetime, I think that was 1.3 million, but when this was asked, there is no money left here. So it's coming out of the general fund. I wanted to get some substantial things for the park and not spend 650,000 on replacing all the parking boards. You know, we are working, um, on a replacement plan, and I think, uh, when we talk about the master plan, a couple of slides, that will help us determine.
But, but to that point, can you bring us the alternative? Like, here's the patching, it's gonna cost us, you know, a hundred thousand dollars? Or six hundred, you know, and that's gonna last five years.
I don't wanna be at the grand opening and people say, you couldn't picture parking. You couldn't stripe it?
Okay, I will, I will bring, uh, those recommendations back once we've been announced.
Yeah, do each alternative because we're not cash for right now. I mean, that's something where we could advance it and get the TIP, the general fund back.
If we have engineering projects that we can't do, that needs to be pushed, um, for this year, you know, I'm more than happy to spend some.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, so I think what everyone's probably come, um, to see tonight for Parks and Recreation. So this right here, we've got the existing pickleball courts and then the 76 parking spots that's in the darker, darker black. What we're engineering right now is the, the eight tennis courts, the 153 parking, um, lot that's right next to the two soccer courts. And, um, the road that runs by tennis, parking lot by tennis, and then straightening out the road by the mausoleum. Um, we're engineering for the additional parking spots for Moline Lowly. There's 72 and 45, so that will give them quite a bit additional parking down the road. Engineering it all, so then when we, we're able to budget for it and, and, um, get that bid out right away. We're also working on, um, you can find the specs for the cemetery area across the street. That won't be budgeted or bid out during this process. So originally when this was brought to City Council, we've talked about up to 10 different courts. During the, one of the best things that have come out of this is feedback from the general public. Good or bad, for pickleball, not for pickleball, for soccer, not for soccer. We've had a great response, emails, um, the in-person last fall, the survey. I mean, we've had great, um, public input from us. And what, what we found out was, we don't need 10. The magic number is eight. Eight, um, you can run, um, a tennis, uh, match very well. You can run, um, be part of another group and run, uh, a big tournament. You can also, uh, have that strike for pickleball as well. And, um, the two things that were presented to Park Board were additional, uh, pickleball courts. And, um, or two soccer courts, the, the mini pitch soccer. With the survey, fifty-four percent of people said pickleball, forty-two percent of people said soccer. So I did not wanna dismiss either one of those because a lot of people voted for them. So we presented this layout, um, and originally the two soccer courts were connected onto the tennis. And from the feedback from, um, public input is, there's a lot going on, um, in a, in a small space. So what we did, um, is space them out. So as you can see, you know, from the pool to pickleball, there's, you know, fifty feet or so. From, from pickleball to that parking lot and the soccer courts, there's another space in between. And then you've got the two soccer courts to tennis, you also have space between with the, the row of, of trees. So we're trying to, not only are we trying to direct water there for runoff, uh, we're also trying to space everyone out. So then they can all enjoy their time. So this is, uh, like Stevens wrapping up, uh, and taking to Park Board next week or following week. And, um, being bid out the first of May.
Are all components of this plan being bid out at the same time?
So the forty, the 72 parking spots and the 45 parking spots are not being bid out. Everything else, the road by, um, mausoleum, the road by tennis, the parking lot for tennis, tennis and the soccer. Are all being, and the parking lot for the swimming pool will all be bid out together.
The footsol is part of this?
Yes, it is an alternate, uh, because they, we have talked about.
That's what I was trying to clarify. I thought I, I thought that it wasn't going to be part of it, but it's an alternate.
Yeah, so it's still being.
It's getting the dollars, but not the.
Correct. Um, because we do know the cost of goods have gone up, the, the price of everything has gone up. We're also bidding it as post-tensioned concrete compared to asphalt. When the company come in from Kansas City to kind of spilling post-tensioned courts to, you know, compared to asphalt. And over the lifetime, the courts, a lot less maintenance, but a lot more upfront costs. So we're gonna make sure that, you know, we can compare the prices of both and, and, um, and see where they come in at.
Did, did somebody else have a name?
I was just gonna mention that it's an alternate.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you for.
Can I ask a quick question about the footsol courts? I remember you originally saying that they can be used and striped as overflow, uh, pickleball courts?
Yep, um, so this can be, so the, the, the tennis they used last year for the tournament was striped for, I think, 14 courts. Cause one of the courts wasn't operational for tennis, um, for the pickleball. That can be used for, we can bring in hoops and play basketball on it, we can play deck hockey on it, we can play soccer on it. If, um, for the tournament, for the pickleball tournament, we can close them down for the weekend and stripe, um, with, with painter's tape. It's not, you know, it's just like what Suzie said earlier, when you have a tournament, they want courts that are site-ready. But those will work, and I have drawings to show that you can paint two pickleball courts on each, um, each one of the soccer courts. And if you really squeeze.
You're going end to end or you're going side to side?
So like the, each section is, um, like the court is broken up in two, that's one court, that's one court. Cause they're sixty feet wide, so you could really, really probably squeeze in, um, five, but we have a fence dividing the two courts, so you can.
Could use like that washable paint too at the middle.
Yeah, um, so they did, um, painter's tape, um, it worked great. It was a lot of, a lot of work for them, but they, they were able to get it done pretty quick and.
And that's a once a year kind of tournament?
So, yeah, so we have one smaller tournament in May. It's the senior Quad Cities Senior Olympics, and then the Quad Cities Pickleball Club is in September. The biggest thing is, is they can only do tournaments in the spring and the fall, because we don't wanna take away parking, um, from the swimming pool.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
In a perfect world, though, everybody wants their stuff gazing.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It doesn't want pickleball on it, pickleball doesn't want anybody on there, and they all want their area.
Uh, Mr. White.
So, so, uh, I guess a couple of questions. With the tennis courts, and, and I'm a huge proponent, I think they're doing the, uh, tension, what do you?
Post-tension.
Post-tension is absolutely believable. I, 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 I think I was part of the, the group when a few years ago, we kind of were told, oh, yeah, we'll just kind of resurface it and it, it'll be fine. And clearly it was a disaster. And so we, spending, if we're going to do this, let's do it right. But one of the questions was, cause in some communities, they've, cause I went up there. And I think if you did it an extra, I don't know, ten feet wide, the, the tennis courts. It then really allows for much more comfortable conversion to, to, uh, pickleball courts. Is that a, a possibility? Cause I know, I had, I had heard from, I can't remember who, somebody, maybe it was, I'm embarrassed, somebody where. There, there had been talk before about enlarging that, that footprint by maybe ten feet. And then that would, I think, possibly solve some of these issues for these long-term. Because, you know, when, when I look at these things, you know, years and years ago, whoever was the person who made the decision that South Park or, uh, Green Valley was going to be eight softball dimes. I mean, that seems like pretty, you know, who's gonna use eight? But by doing that and thinking long-term, we're able to get national, uh, um, tournaments in here. We're able to do all of those things. I probably would've been one, say, oh, we do this and then we'll put some volleyball here and we'll put some, uh, put some soccer fields over there. And that, that, that'd be a great park for it. But the way that the world is moving is to have areas where you have enough, um, spaces to have those national tournaments to really move the needle. And so.
So if, if tennis was ever to be converted to pickleball, um, I had Shive lay out currently what we have, what we could do with. And right now with that, just spacing, we can do twenty, uh, thirty, up to thirty-two right now. And twenty-eight if we spread them out with a little bit more walkway.
And, and that according to one of the public comments today would be more than the twenty-four needed for regional.
Yeah, if, let's say we, you know, there, there has been some discussions about wanting to build a regional tennis with the, with the, with the school district. And, and so when I had this discussion with the tennis club, they said, well, we need to make sure that if these do turn to pickleball someday, that we've got a plan to make sure they can comfortably turn into pickleball. And so as part of the design, I've asked Shive to give us what we could do for pickleball courts and the exact footprint.
Do they do like three then? Is that how they do it?
It's four walkway, no, sorry, it's eight, four and four walkway, eight or four and four walkway. I'll send them out.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
They gave us two different ones to give a little bit more. If you said, okay, we're just doing all pickleball courts, no walkways, no nothing, it's thirty-two. And if we add some walkway to some area, it's, um, it's twenty.
And that's more than the twenty-four required for.
Correct, um, yeah, so what, you know, right now, well, not region. There's no like real set number of how many courts you need to have a tournament. The more you have, the more people. Yeah, but I mean, twenty-eight would be.
So that'd be eight that exists plus another twenty.
No, twenty-eight on the tennis court, so it'd be twenty-eight plus eight we could potentially have. I'll, I'll send it out to everyone.
If you wouldn't mind, that'd be great.
But I, I had another. But I, I had another park board member ask about that, so I wanted to make sure we have that. As a, I don't want to build them too short now, we have a lot of dead space in there.
Eric, could you recall how many pickleball courts there are in Naperville, which is the closest location to us? Where do they have?
I couldn't tell him.
That is the closest place.
It's quite a bit, um, they, but they've got a regional complex that, I mean, it's one parking lot for tennis, soccer, pickleball. I mean, it's, I mean, they host one of the national tournaments and like you could, the winner of one of them makes one billion grams. I mean, it's, it's, it's really impressive.
So I-
Second or third largest city in the state.
Yeah, there you go.
Surrounded by everybody.
Naperville, we are not.
Yes. What is the Park Board's thought on growing the sport for the youth of our community? Because as someone with a child, say tennis player, I know that tennis is not alive and well in the younger generations. But if you're growing a sport, you know, what is the role the Park Board is going to play in bringing that to the kids of this community? Because it's always going to come down to access. Who has access to rent the, rent the equipment or buy the equipment or be a part of an organization? Is there a plan? Have they talked about that? Because it, I just think it's very important that if we're investing public dollars, that, that, that we are investing in the youth of this community because we want them to have opportunity. And, and closing opportunity gaps is extremely important.
So right now, we partner with the Quad City Tennis Club to offer tennis classes at significantly discounted rate compared to what is charged at the, at the tennis club. I think that's a, a good foundation to see if, you know, if they're interested in tennis and wanting to spend more on, you know, math, what am I trying to say? You know, more than just sixteen weeks at a time. We definitely need to do better, especially since we're going to be spending quite a bit more money on these tennis courts. And we did even with like the pickleball or soccer. We can't just think about pickleball tournaments. We need to think about tennis, tennis matches, tennis tournaments as well. And working with the other cities within here to-
Sure.
Bring those tournaments. And that's conversations that we've had with, with the Quad City, especially on the soccer courts, the ones from Stevens and the ones proposed to them.
I would encourage you to talk with the Park Board about how they plan to engage our youth and make this accessible. Think pickleball especially accessible.
Well, I thought you were just asking about tennis.
No, I, it's really, I mean, tennis is what tennis is right now in Moline. But pickleball, if, if the story's about its growth and its popularity and the fact that kids are playing it all, you know, all the way to older adults, I think it's a, it's a place that's ripe for investment in our youth. And it shouldn't just be, you know, a question of who has the funds to support it. It should be something that our Park Board is looking at to help support. Because we are supporting the facilities. I, I'm talking about the programming.
Yep, so we've, we've also partnered with the Quad City Pickleball Club to offer some youth classes during the, during the summer. Some weekday ones, and then if they're interested after that to add a little bit more like workshops.
Okay, so you already have talked about it?
Yep, we've already, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought your time just about ends.
No, I was trying, I mean, I was, I'm sorry, I put that in there just because I think that there are some perspective differences about what's popular and how to use a tennis court.
Yep, so we already got those programming in our guide for this, this summer involved, so summer for sure.
So Eric, I think you managed the impossible. I think you managed to satisfy not only tennis and soccer, but pickleball too, and that's planned.
I don't, don't think anyone was, I don't think anyone was-
It didn't sound like you had satisfaction. A compromise. And nobody was completely happy.
Soccer contingent happy with this, I mean, is that?
So when I, when I met with Lulac about this and then the last park board meeting, we had probably ten to fifteen people came in support of. I mean, at the end of the day, soccer is played on, on grass and on the larger field. I don't think we're trying to replace the game of soccer necessarily, but we're giving them a different avenue to play. And, and, yeah, yes.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and to the soccer thing, I would venture that I probably spent more time at soccer fields than maybe all the people here combined. And am a huge proponent of soccer. In fact, I, I feel terrible, my daughter, the twenty seconds left in double overtime scored the way it rolled against Genesee the night that I missed it. So I'm crushed right now, but anyway. But, so I have been a huge, huge proponent of this at Stevens Park and that's why I wanted those basketball courts to be convertible over to, to soccer as well. And so I, no one could ever say that I am not in favor of soccer. I've been on the soccer club, both travel and youth and sponsored things all over soccer in this pool. So one, I, I haven't heard from any of these soccer clubs or parents or any of those things. Not one of them has ever said anything about this down at Green Valley to me at all. And I'm in that realm all of the time. So I'm not sure if maybe there's a disconnect where there hasn't been conversations from them. But I think that this is a mistake right now. Because again, getting back to like the example of South, of Green Valley, I think we have an opportunity here to really have a racket center area that you talk about wanting to have more youth do this. If we wind up having a, a big youth movement on, on pickleball, these eight courts aren't, aren't going to be enough. And so we're going to need to have more and we're not going to just take them all. I was just thinking about the conversion of the tennis, like long-range downfield. If there's something in ten, fifteen years that happens with the school district up, up the top of the hill, that's the long-term. But clearly, I don't think we're going to build these eight courts and within the next year or two, turn them into pickleball. I mean, that's, that's unrealistic. And so, but if this pickleball goes, we start to program it and it's only been open for- Not even a year. And, and so to all of a sudden then close off any expansion opportunities for this at this location because we jumped the gun and put the, the foosball, foosball mini pitches right at that location. I, I, I think that's a mistake. I mean, there are other opportunities of places where the, could be down in Riverside. If you, if you look over by the second alarmers, there's that already a road there to nowhere that just random people park on, that you could put a couple of mini pitches on there and have it there. But again, I don't think we're right yet. I don't think we've seen what happened to see them. I guarantee you, just like when somebody builds a house, the first time they do it or whatever, it's like, God, I wish I would have tweaked this, I wouldn't wish we would have done this a little bit differently. When we do Stevens Park, we're going to put these pitches in and we're going to realize, oh, we should have gone with this, we should have gone a little bit different here or, and, and learned from those ones. And, and so I think would be a much, much, much better long-term plan is to hold off on this area. If the youth reject pickleball wholesale and there's, there's nobody who wants to do those things and we don't have to expand it, the tennis thing happens up the hill, whatever. Stevens Park, the, the foosball mini pitches are used constantly, all the time. We need to find, but maybe East End Park might be in a place or whatever. I just think that this is short-sighted. We've got the money, so we've got to spend it rather than taking this step by step and thinking long-term. Because having additional good dedicated courts are the things that are going to get those big regional national tournaments. If you say, hey, we've got eight and then we're, we're, we're going to throw you on a mini pitch and kind of put you sideways on, on that, we're, we're, we're going to lose out of the gate. And so I, I really think that we need to think about this, especially if we do the more expensive post-tension, all of those sorts of things. I mean, from my understanding that the, the additional pickleball or additional mini pitches are just if we have money left over.
Right, so that's a good thing to answer.
And, and so I, I think that we should hold off on that, keep it open. Never, not saying never, but think before we act.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
I agree with Mike. All the individuals in the community that went out, raised a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and have skin in the game, they came forward. They put so much of the time and effort into making this happen. Just begs us to slow down and not rush in and put that court up. If it takes off at Stevens Park, there's plenty of places we can take it. Maybe the old tennis courts at Stevens Park where it's now sand volleyball. We can relocate sand volleyball and that's a perfect low enclosure where there's not a lot of noise. You could put pickleball courts in there if there's such a, you know, everybody wants to do that. Or a footsall courts, I'm sorry, up at Stevens Park. But, uh, I, yeah, I, I, I agree, there's no rush. You know, we can only add them in later, but if we want to grow pickleball, this would be the place to do it.
Can I ask a question? Are you talking about tennis and soccer or are you just talking about soccer?
So what, what I'm saying is, no, I, I, I think that the tennis should go in. I just think that those, those two mini pitches, throwing them in at this moment now is a mistake. I'm not saying never, but I'm saying let's, let the pickleball see what happens after maybe two or three years and see how this has grown and, and, you know, I know that they only have one tournament right now, but that's one tournament in one year. I mean, three years from now, they may have invitationals all over the place. We don't know, but if we make the, make a mistake and do this and then three years from now, five years from now, pickleball is exploding and we're like, wow, we could have gotten a national tournament, we could have gotten regional tournaments, but we don't have room for it. Or we lost out on it because it's just taped up on a mini pitch. I think we're going to be kicking ourselves. And I mean, and, and I understand it went through the Park Board, but I mean, it was a four-three vote, which is, it's, this was not in any way like, this is a unanimous thing. You even said that the input from the public was more pickleball than footsall. I'm not saying to build pickleball there either. I'm saying let's take a breath and make sure we do this right.
You may or may not know, I am the liaison for the Park Board and so I attended all these meetings and heard the surveys and all that stuff. It was a four to three vote, but I think consensus of, like, you know, we both have the soccer folks, you've gotten all the emails, you've gotten all the pickleball folks. It is, you know, not controversial, but it, each side has its own opinion. I do think that the final thoughts of the Park Board though, especially mentioned by one of the new members, was to let's make this an alternate. We're not in any hurry here. Uh, we don't even know what the pool is going to cost yet. We don't know what the tennis is going to cost, especially if you go to the good concrete. We don't know what any of this is going to cost. Let's hold, let's hold our breath here, let's see what these bids come back. If design is one thing, it's not going to cost a ton of money, design, extra pickleball versus footsall. Let's see what these prices come back. They're of the opinion that coming back to council and asking for more money is a non-starter. So they know they have to live within the budget they've got. So they want to see, their first priority is pool, lazy river, slides, a new, that's probably coming in the next slide. Okay, so I won't go into that. That's their priority. Second priority to them is tennis. Third priority is the parking. Cause if you're going to improve tennis and pool, you better be able to park them in there instead of where they're all parking now on the grass. So footsall and pickleball expansion is fourth. And they want to see what these bids come back before they commit further down the road. All they've committed for right now is design and footsall as an alternative.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, there was a public comment tonight that really spoke about walkable parks and neighborhood parks. And I think that we need to remind ourselves that not all residents of Moline have cars and, and can drive around. And I think that the more accessible and inclusive our parks are, even if it's not at the same scale at every park, that makes them better. Um, I live by a neighborhood park that I wish had a, a soccer field. And that's optimistic, by the way. It just has a field that no one uses. And so I, I like this and as the potential future Port Ward alderman of Riverside pending the redistricting, I really like the idea of having, you know, these, these multiple programs we can do. And if, you know, footsall is a dud and pickleball is the winner, I'm pretty confident that this can be repurposed long-term as well. So I, I think it's, it's really, given the alternative universe where, you know, all this kind of works out, I think it's, it's the better idea.
I will say that from the parking lot of tennis, you know, connects to tennis, there's a sidewalk that goes all the way around, connects you to soccer, it also connects you to pickleball and the swimming pool. What you'll see in the next couple of slides is a shelter over there that'll connect all of it as well. So there is, I mean, from that main parking lot, you shouldn't be able to walk to pretty much. I know that's not exactly what he was.
No, but what you're, yeah, it sounds like you're getting at, this is really an activity complex.
Yeah.
I mean, it's another term for a park where you're connecting all of that, yes.
But they, so I just want to agree with some of the other comments that we need the footsall courts probably. Get a look at them, maybe, maybe we need lots of them in town. I just think that that location, we, we need to hold off as has already been said, so I don't want to labor that anymore. There were a couple of other things on this. One is, there's a cut through in the cemetery from Fourth Avenue that, that leads you. Hey, I can't tell on this map, but it looks like that cut through will no longer take you to the baseball fields.
Yeah, so that cut through that people use for pickleball to get over to that isn't technically made to, it's, it's, it's only wide enough for really one car to go through. It's more of a service road for staff and what the cemetery needs. With straightening out, was able to, it did take a little bit of parking away from, from, from Little League right now, but we have given the, the area in front of the mausoleum, we originally were going to keep because it's kind of the history toward, to, to that mausoleum. It's only wide enough to get a horse and carriage through them. But by straightening out, we take a little parking from up top and then we get it back down below. As staff and, and most of the Park Board members, they don't want people coming through that area because it's, it's not only, it's damaging that road that needs to be fixed, but it's also not wide enough. So if multiple cars are coming through, they're getting very close and tearing up some of the grass and some of that area where the, some of the oldest cemetery.
She's sending down to twenty-six feet around.
Which that area is getting redone this year, so it is, you know, going down. I'm terrible with streets and names, but that area is getting redone right now.
Fair, fair enough. The cemetery, we talked about the, because that's a historic cemetery. It's really, some of those markers are old and historic. We had talked before about parks, maybe like the ten-year plan to, is that in there?
I'm going to be talking about that in twenty twenty-three projects. And so Bob and I have a huge conversation about, you know, I don't want to sound greedy because we're getting all this money for Riverside Park, but there are several other things like East End Park, like the, the semi, the Pioneer Cemetery is what, what, what it's called, but some of those projects.
Cause it's very, it's very, it's very visual. And like on Fourth Avenue, as you're coming into the park or where you're not recommending the park, but there's just a lot of brush and so forth. It's almost, it begs for retaining wall or some cleaning up or, it's just visually, it's a really, plus it's interesting. It's really interesting.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Stevens.
Yeah, just, again, it's an alternate, it's not something that was, it's decided. But I, a, a few people reached out to me and also even having Lulac here in defense of this alternative. It's something to be mindful and aware of. They're a civil rights organization that's kind of like the N double A C P. So they've been at the forefront fighting for rights and all kinds of things that have been wrong, even to right now with voting rights at, at the national and different state level. So it, it's, it's a serious organization that's pretty active. So, you know, just to have them here, it's something to make note of. But they're the nicest people because I am a member of the Lulac in Davenport. I'm a Deuce Bay member. So, uh, so I, I got a call from people about different comments that were said at some of these meetings. And my reaction was like, well, let me find out straight from people who were there and the other individuals. And then I read some of the emails and the, the first time I heard about footsall, I thought, oh, what a great idea. My family's had family reunions, that's Riverside Park, my wife's family has had them and- And I could see the old and young get together, kick a ball, play in the smaller field, right? That's the first thought picturing our families playing. And so then I start reading some of these comments and I get these things and I, I, I hear comments like, no, people will not respect the courts or do some damage. Or this is a class, a classy place. And there's these overtones that really shouldn't be there. And we all, I don't even have to explain it, but we all can tell. And I felt them from the get-go. So I just want to put, again, it's an alternative. These things happen. People quickly have a knee jerk reaction and it comes like, well, it should be over there on Stevens Park. Those things, they, they do have some, uh, undertones that I am not comfortable with and I just have to put it out there. Again, it's an alternative. I explained to people, talk to Eric, he'll explain it. It's not something that is totally done. We gotta figure out what the budget is, but, uh, other people felt the same way. So I did, did want to point that out.
I had something about Lulac. So they were great to work, um, to speak with and they came, um, several of them came to the last park board meeting to voice their, and really excited about Stevens Park and Riverside. They, their conversation was great. They kind of opened my eyes to some things that, um, I think we can do better as a department and as the city. And I've actually referred them to Tori to kind of talk about some more things that we can do. You know, one of the things that, um, we didn't have a great response back was when the, the, the survey was in Spanish, but we only got like two or three of them. And I'm going to be working with them going forward. And when we talk about the master plan is making sure we're involving as many groups as possible. Not just putting out on Facebook and, and, and social media and whatnot, but knowing these key contributors to the city. Cause we're not, I mean, I think you said that we had over forty different languages spoken in those. Sixties. So I mean, that's, um, so those are some things that we can do better. So they were great to work with.
I think that as, as the park board has it laid out, I think the priorities are in the right places. And that, um, I just do not expect to be looking at a contract that says, let's move ahead with these courts. Because of, we know the rising cost and how those things are looking. I mean, and I think they've got those things in the right order, right? Let's, let's get the pool, let's get the parking and let's get those tennis courts fixed up to the level they need to be at. So I think that's, that's a long-term issue that we're going to be looking at is to like, what's that next step? I very much think that the next level of investment or the next thing to think about Riverside Park should be resolved around diversifying what is there. I don't know if that's the right spot. I don't know if there's a better location with access to more courts. I mean, those are all conversations we have. I know we were focused in this space on this project, but I think as we look toward the future, when I expect to not be moving forward with that and that being the conversation down the road, that would be the piece that I see as, as an opportunity. I think that, um, you know, soccer, footsaw is, is definitely more focused toward a younger audience too. You know, and not saying that that younger audience is not coming for pickleball, but it's definitely not getting that older audience, I think, as much. And a lot of, you know, kids and those sorts of things that they want access to soccer field, they can't just get to Stevens Park or to another location. And so I think having those, that, that access spread throughout the city, a true diverse park of what we offer in our neighborhoods is, is more the vision of where I'd love to see that go. Uh, but I just think in this place, we're going to focus on those top three things and that's probably what we're going to be laughing at. And, and I agree with you. And I think to your point, like, you know, across the street over there, you could actually put three of those footsaw courts. And so I, I, I agree with you. I think that, you know, one, two, and three are really what we should be focusing on. And so I guess what I'd like to do is make a recommendation, the council make a recommendation to, uh, the park board to hold off for at least two years, number four. Like whether it's park four, whether it's footsaw, whether it's pickleball, to leave that space open for the next two years to figure out where we're at and what makes sense and have that as a council recommendation to, to, uh, to the park board. So that's a, that's a motion.
I, I do feel, uh, I will vote against this. I feel it's, um, on principle, it's overreach. For us to be recommending as a body, what another, uh, committee should do. I understand we hold the purse strings, we ultimately get to decide, but I do feel that there is just a, a level of overreach there that I'm not comfortable with.
I'm not inclined to give any further direction at this time. I think with what we've heard and where the park board is at and knowing, you know, ultimately that'll be a conversation to continue. But, um, at this time, I think a lot of that is standing to see where the bids come back is what I'm inclined to do.
And I'll just add soccer is the most popular sport in the world and it will be. It's the, he's his game to play. You just need a ball and this, it'll get used. We could come back later in the future and say, man, why didn't we invest in footsaw? Uh, because it's also a fast-growing. And now it might be outpacing pickleball, uh, but it's up there in popularity.
Just, I would agree with that a hundred percent. Uh, we've talked about this a few different times. We, we really need to consider how we're going to invest more in soccer and in footsaw as well. It's just, it's about making sure that we leave ourselves the flexibility to, you know, get a little bit more information before we decide.
Yeah. And to, and to that point, I mean, you're right. It may be growing and we may be like, wow, we put it in a place where we can only put two. Where maybe we, another place we could have put three and then actually programmed it had, you know, Saturday teams and three-on-three or five-on-five and, and programmed it well. So I, that's where I think just taking a breath, making sure we're doing it right is just the recommendation. I'm not, I'm not recommending that we pull back funds, which we would have the authority to do. I'm just saying that we make that recommendation as.
Thank you, Mr. Prene.
With, with the, the nature of, and Alderman and Stias mentioned, the nature of the comments and, uh, there are interpretations that are very racially charged. I would caution the council with a recommendation. Uh, my fear is what message that might send to people in the community. And, and just with that recommendation, there's already a mechanism that we are putting this at the lower tier, that there isn't a way to take caution in, in how we're approaching this. I think that mechanism already exists. I don't think we need to add to that.
I want to support Alderman's opinion. I'm hesitant to make a recommendation to another board. It's non-binding. They can do whatever they want to do. Alderman's is correct. All we control is the money. You can take the money back. But I don't think there's any interest here with this council to take that money back. So it's a non-binding recommendation.
I think we've exhausted this particular topic and I think we still have a few more slides. Yes. So I'm going to call for our vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
May.
The names have it.
Do, question. Uh, with, uh, potential, uh, I, Illinois ninety-two being redone, how does this impact access to these parking spots? Cause I know that that section might not be a public road.
Yeah. So I've talked to Bob about that. I've talked to engineering about it. Oliver and I have talked about that as well. You know, they're still in basically discussions about it. I mean, this has been going on.
I mean, wait, tell them.
At the end of the day.
Although it's been engineered.
At the end of the day, if they give us the street from, from the pond until, you know, I mean, that, that just makes it where we can even put more into this park. And now we can put, you know, just across the parking lot of the pickleball, there's more pickleball or more soccer or, you know, walking paths or, or add on to Little League. So I think, um, I think that might be best case scenario for the parks.
All right. Nice. Yeah, I'm sorry. I need to know who the eyes were on that vote. Went and more. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so really quickly, um, I'm going to go through the layout of the swimming pool. Um, I'm going to break it up into four different parts. So this is like the general layout and then I'll scroll down and do hints on the pictures. So this looks very similar to what was proposed in the feasibility study. At that time, Burbank Parks did the feasibility study. Through the RFP process, um, the pool committee, which was two staff members, city council member and two park board members, actually chose to vote Waters Edge over, um, over Burbank. I think, um, they've done a great job and highly, highly qualified and excited for it. So I'm going to go to the next picture and kind of talk about some of the main, um, attractions for this. So originally we were going to come up with an amenities committee to help pick out the splash pad, the water slides and whatnot. But after examining several, um, cities across the Midwest, we, we, we pretty much landed on, um, these, um, similar water slides to what is in Tsunami, um, Water Park, which is in Sioux Center, Iowa. It's a, it's three different slides. Um, originally we were just talking about two water slides, but we're looking to do three. One's a body slide, one's a tube slide and one's a speed slide. No other facility in the, in the Quad Cities has a speed slide. And, um, I would ask that you guys look that up in your spare time because that picture doesn't give it justice. It's thirty feet tall, um, the, the platform is, um, and in comparison, the pickleball court, uh, lights are forty feet tall. So we're three-fourths of the way up there. And, uh, that facility won, um, outstanding attraction for cities under ten thousand. I don't think that's really relevant for ten thousand, but top attraction in twenty twenty, um, by the Iowa Tourism Bureau and the Travel Federation of Iowa. So it's a pretty big deal. I mean, I think Oliver and Law during can agree, we automatically kind of went to that and we've never, I mean, you got Moline Blue. You've got some, um, some green and yellow there that, uh, I think fits very well and that.
You got your sponsored paper hat. We're going down everywhere now.
I already, I already spoke about that. So originally we were going to have one water slide dump into the main body and then one going to there. Um, the reason why we decided against that is because you need to have a lifeguard that the sole purpose is to, um, guard the bottom of the water slide. And by separate, uh, by combining all of them, now you only need one lifeguard. Staffing is going to be a challenge, um, for, forever, um, with lifeguards. And, and so I want to be conscious about how many staff we need for this facility. Also, the way we've got it set up right now, the main body of water, you can run swimming lessons, the, the lap swim area, you can lap swimming. That area for the water slides is big enough to offer water aerobics or the water fitness class. And then you also have the lazy river that you can walk around, um, either with the current, against current, no current, and also offer swimming lessons to go do water walking. So not only are we trying to, uh, have as many open hours, but we also want to program it as much as possible. So then, you know, we're getting people to come to our facility. Number two, um, not number two, but the lazy river, uh, does have spray features at either end. We're also, um, talking about a couple more spray features. Uh, we had a design meeting last week, but so these aren't quite up, um, to the layout. But, uh, that's basically the slides are laid out where it's going to be, the lazy river is. Splash pad is actually quite a bit bigger than what originally was planned. That's going to be, um, we're going to fairly soon put that on social media and have them vote on option one or option two. And say, try to get a little bit more of the, um, citizens engaged with it. So this will be number one. And what you can kind of see with this picture is from left or, or right to left, you've got little kids moving up to bigger kids. You've got several ground sprays, smaller, um, features, and then it kind of goes up from there with, with one of the larger features, um, as well. That connects to the pickleball parking lot and then the back parking lot as well. The main body.
An outside defense?
What? Yes and no. So it kind of, so we're going to be able to opt in the splash pad before the season opens and before the pool opens for the day. So from eight to noon or whenever we decide to open, um, that's going to be completely free. And then as soon as the facility opens, we lock that and then it becomes part of the general facility. That thing can be open, you know, all the way through September as long as the weather is nice. And something that we don't currently have, um, in Moline. So that, that would be great to, great to have, um, as well. Shade, um, is sprinkled around. That's going to be one of the last things along the landscaping, um, as well. The main body of water, we're looking at relocating the basketball hoop. Currently we have a spray feature kind of in the middle of the pool. We're going to add smaller spray features because we're putting quite a bit of spray features in the splash pad. We also want to put something in that, in that main body as well. But right now, the way we have it set up is we have to put a lifeguard on the other side of the spray feature. And by putting smaller ones that are just as exciting, because half of them don't currently work, um, we're eliminating a staff person and moving them over to, um, the lazy river. You also have, um, the bath house, which I'll go through, uh, very quickly. Right next to the bath house is a dual-purpose pickleball shelter, shelter for the, um, swimming pool and family slash unisex restrooms and the restrooms for pickleball. Let's see, did I hit anything else? Updating the concession sandwich, I'll show you a little bit about that. Upgrading the pump house. One of the nice things that they did for the, for the pump house is they made it too big. So now we've got enough room where originally we were spacing an aisle with Burbank. We have enough room in that, uh, to put all the, all the, all the pumps, motors, um, filters we need. Plus, um, just above the slides, there's that green space area. That space is big enough to add a deep end someday. That was very low, very low on, uh, the survey. But, you know, in case we do want to add deep end diving boards, drop slides, um, and whatnot, that's enough space, um, to leave it. And then we also brought the fencing in. Um, we don't need all that space. Um, it's a maintenance nightmare. I think bringing it in, making it a little bit more cozier, adding landscaping, um, deck chairs, picnic tables, all that kind of stuff will really bring, um, the experience in. So I'm going to move to the next slide and kind of jump into a little bit more detail of each one. I'll try to make it quick. I'm sorry. I've talked too long. So originally with the bath house, we weren't going to do very much with the bath house, but after taking a little bit more deeper dive into it, right now, when you walk in and pay on the left-hand side, you have to choose male or female. And right now we have no unisex slash family restrooms inside the facility. You have to go on the outside of the facility and use the bathroom that pickleball is currently using. So what we're talking about now is, is making right down the middle, uh, making that open, um, sliding over the counter to pay. Walk straight through. Thank you. I wish I had a laser pointer.
Thank you, Anna. I know. Straight through this way.
Yep. Straight through there. You have to go through the bath house and then you'll get to decide, um, if you want to go to the male restroom, the female restroom, or down will be the, the, um, the unisex slash family restrooms, which I'll go into that for next. Yes. So now, um, below we take away that, um, outside restroom and convert that into more of a concession stand. So that concession stand right now is very basic. We offer two or three warm items. With this, I'm talking pretzels, popcorn, nachos, chicken strobes, honey rings, cheese balls, cook your own pizza. This would be like the fourth concession stand that I've designed and I mean, cheese balls alone will be a huge hit, um, at this facility. But we need to make sure we've got the space and the capability of.
Is one of our wellness centers?
Yes and no. So that's kind of the layout of the bath house. Really quick, I'm going to go back. You see the large, um, shelter that's right next to the bath house? That's what we're going to be discussing next, just so you're aware of where the.
There's the current bath house. This is what he's going to talk about next.
Yeah. So that's where the, the unisex slash family restrooms are. I think that's very important, um, for this facility. We don't want to make, we want to be inviting. We don't want to make anyone uncomfortable, um, you know, with children or if they don't associate with their biological, um, gender. I think they can use whatever they would like, um, and feel comfortable in their facility. So that's the next section.
In, in the old pool, the, that whole thing is going away, the fork thing that is flush, is it, or is that all going to stay?
Say that again.
The water.
That's going away.
So there, there, there won't be any feature.
No, there'll be several small ones.
Just a little, okay, but nothing like to climb or.
Yeah, that's where we have to put lifeguard right now. And I eliminated the second one. We can shift that over to there. Okay. So this is the shared shelter for the, uh, pool and for pickleball. Left-hand side, obviously way too big. Originally when we talked about is enough seating for around sixty to seventy-two. So that will be actually shrinking down. We've got enough.
These are, these are picnic tables.
So we'll have enough seating there for seventy-two plus areas where you can bring in like a, a booth or something like that. That's the shelter that connects to pickleball, connects to tennis, um, and then on the other side.
That's facing west.
Yes.
Facing pickleball.
Will you show them where the unisex family restrooms are?
Right here, aren't they? Here on the top.
Yep. Other, the top ones. Those two. So when you walk out of the bath house, you see a straight shot, um, for those. And you, we've got two of them. Um, they've got showers, they've got changing tables, they have sinks, they've got everything, um, that the other, um, male. That the other, um, male, female restroom.
And both gen, uh, both, there's changing here, both are.
Yes. And all, all restrooms.
Yes, yes.
For all of you gentlemen.
Well, no, they all should be in the men's.
So the current bath house does have. So the, for the pickle, for the swimming pool side, right now there's only four tables. We're going to make that a little bit bigger and add an extra picnic table on either side. And that's going to be the area where if a family wants to run out for like a birthday party, um, we, we've got a designated eighteen spots on one side and then another eighteen spots on the other. Or if a family reunion wants to rent that area, you've got enough seating for about thirty-six. And I think that was very important as I want to promote birthday parties and stuff.
One thing for your visual, you see how this side looks much bigger than this side. And like you said, this is going to reduce and this is going to expand. So it's going to look more and more.
Symmetrical.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I will say that this was budgeted in our regular CIP for a park, uh, for, um, for a shelter for pickleball. And so by bringing it in there, we're able to kind of tap into the family restroom. And then also the, oh, I forget who, um, that's donated twenty thousand dollars is kind of the naming rights for the.
Rotary.
Rotary. It's been a long night. I'm sorry. Uh, Rotary has donated twenty thousand dollars, uh, for the naming rights of this, um, pavilion as well. So they're really excited about that too. Okay. So two park, uh, the new park offices, scroll back real quick. It's up at the top, um, side. So originally it was more closer to the pickleball parking lot. When the feasibility study was done, pickleball wasn't quite, um, built yet. And so there's actually a retention pot there now. And we didn't really want to fight with pickleball and the swimming pool for parking. So by moving into that back parking, which is technically overflow, but Alderman and you can agree, not a lot of people park back there. That'll give us parking upfront and then staff, lifeguards, um, anyone coming to the park offices can also park in that parking area as well. There's fifty on top of the ones closest to the park offices. So, um, going through this, um, on the outside, you know, we haven't picked colors or whatnot yet, but, the parks and recreation, that's the side that you will see from the road. And that will actually say Moline Parks Recreation, the address on it, um, as well. We haven't really, we've talked about, um, some colors, but that hasn't really, um, settled yet. That will be settled in a couple of weeks. Pretty much design is, is done for the swimming pool minus some small shade structures, um, and for this as well. I'll show you, um, the layout. You come in the front door. And that whole top area are offices. You've got the corner, some, you have the, um, area of the reception and then three offices as well. You've got a conference room right there. You've got a garage, parked, parked vehicle. You've got lots of storage. And then on the left-hand side, those offices have switched around a little bit, but you have a break room. You've got a equipment slash intern office, you know, future expansion if we do add, um, staff as well. And then also we're kind of shifting the equipment slash utility closet to the outside as well. So potentially you could add two more staff in this building if that ever came about. You also have family restrooms on the outside of the back of the building. Those restrooms will be used for the splash pad. So then when I found out installing splash pads, they're going to go to the bathroom no matter what. They're either going to use the splash pad.
Good to know.
So if you, if you could show where the kind of location of the bathroom.
Bathroom would be right there.
Open and the rest of the.
Right about here.
Yep. So family restrooms, um, well, family, unisex, it doesn't matter. It's just one restroom, um, on the outside, but I believe that will be heavily used as well. So, um, that's the general layout of the offices.
For the general unisex bathrooms and all that, I'm also thinking about handicap, um, families with kids that have mobility issues or anybody that have any mobility issues. So I think that that's great because it's just easier when you have that kind of access. Um, do we, are we investing in any of that, those cranes that help people with mobility issues get into pools?
Chairlifts. Absolutely. Yep. Um, so we actually had a huge conversation. Were you part of that? No. Okay. So we had a huge conversation on Friday about, um, you have to have two access, uh, two accessible accesses into water. And, uh, the beachfront entry, which everyone believes that's not, that does not count. Um, you have to every twenty, for every foot, you have to, is one inch of water. I mean, you're talking, you know, twenty feet landing spot. Uh, no. So we're talking about chairlifts. We're talking about, um, the stairs that are currently there meet requirements. So that's, that's your two access. Splash pad, I mean, the gates will be wide enough. Um, so yes, we're taking, we can't remodel the facility and then it comes out. Sorry. It's not easy accessible. That's a. Okay. Any other questions over the pool, um, before I kind of move on to, okay, sorry. Number twenty-three. So talking about upgrading picnic tables to the shelters and whatnot, um, upgrading the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that came out in two thousand and fourteen. That plan was not done very well. Um, doesn't talk about the aquatics in there. It really doesn't talk about where Parks and Recreation departments are going and what is trending. And, and it just gives ideas of maybe we should put concrete under this picnic table compared to, hey, we really should be redoing this parking lot. We really should be adding more things to East End Park, you know, those kinds of things. So, um, starting that at the end of this year and starting all of twenty-three. And that's where public input will be key for. Um, we do have a couple of placeholders in twenty-three and twenty-four because we took out some of the, or some of the upgrades to the swimming pool. But talking to staff, a couple of these have not been approved by Park Board yet, but some of the ideas that staff has came up with that we think is very important is number one, East End Park upgrades. Want to work with Alderman O'Brien on upgrades with that down the road. Then butter with Parkway riprap. That's the rocks that sit on, um, the shoreline to keep it from eroding, eroding. That's very important, um, especially with the possibility of flooding. Twenty-four, same thing, upgrading with picnic tables, um, new basketball court in Kiwanis. What we're kind of looking at going forward is some of those amenities that need to be upgraded. We've gotten our, most of our playgrounds to the point where they're all new within the last ten or fifteen years. Now we're looking at, you know, are we going to update the basketball courts? Are we going to update some shelters? Are we going to do this? Are we going to do that? That's what the master plan will help us determine, um, as well. Another placeholder, one of the biggest complaints I have for Green Valley is there's no warm-up mounds. They tear up the outfield, um, because there's no warm-up mound, same with batting cages. So that's kind of a placeholder. Um, upgrades, um, for the parking, that's, uh, Riverside Park, um, since we already will have it designed, uh, easy to get it out. And then right now we've got Stevens Park in twenty-four. Uh, I'd like to push that up to twenty-three and if possible, um, get it bought in twenty-two if they have that in the program. I am done talking. Any questions?
With the huge expansion to the pool, is there, has there been any thoughts about like rebranding, like more of a commercial name that, you know, sort of the aquatic center?
You're talking about ice layer or aquatic.
Like naming.
Like Riverside Riverslide?
Or Riverside Graphic. You know, something like.
It's currently called the Riverside Riverslide. That's what everyone keeps calling it. Yeah.
That's, that's the name.
So we talked about changing like the name of the concession stand and whatnot. We have not talked about changing the name. I've spoke to a couple of businesses about naming rights. But no, no cigar yet. But, um, I think, um, I think family is important and I want, and I think aquatic center is important because we're not a water park. A water park is, you go there, you're paying thirty or forty dollars to get in. There's, um, a wave pool. I mean, you're, you're buying, um, you know, drinks and all this stuff and it's costing a lot. I want to make sure that we're one, affordable and two, make sure that people know that we are a family facility. So not, not opposed to it, but I do kind of like the name.
Couple of questions just on things from my previous CIP long term. The Music Guild bathroom remodel, did that wind up?
It has not. So I had a, a large conversation with, um, a city administrator about reaching out to those soccer groups and only Little League, the Music Guild, and start trying to incorporate those kinds of projects into our master plan and going forward. Um, and it's been voted down twice in twenty and twenty-one, or twenty-one and twenty-two. But this is the time this summer where I will take, um, and work with all the groups and kind of put a, because at the end of the day, there are facilities and we want to make sure that they're maintained and not pushed off the, that kind of maintenance of this.
Yeah. Cause at one point at the time, the twenty-two and the twenty-three.
Yeah. So it technically is still on our spreadsheet, just not in, uh, keep getting pushed out. Uh, but we do meet, um, in the fall to discuss, um, the other projects and whatnot as well.
The other is, we, we've had some discussions regarding the Kiwanis Bike Trail.
Yep.
And there's a, a number of funds through ARPA that we have allocated. Has there been any future conversations? I know that there have been some discussions about maybe applying for some grants for some portion of that.
So it's brought up a little bit with Complete Streets and I plan on asking to bring that back. Um, I had a large conversation as well with, with, uh, Bob on that. But yes, that, it's one of those things that we know it's there, but no one really wants to talk about it because it is a large project, but it needs to be talked about.
I want to talk about.
Yes.
I want an engineer.
Yeah. It's already, I believe engineering.
So is, is that something where, if it hasn't been, I mean, that's probably the first step. Do we need to, the money's there. Should we, can you guys bring back something for us to get that processed?
I think we have some bikeways money this year from our.
We got one point five million.
I'll talk to.
We'll round the wagons on it and bring something back.
Last question. Uh, the Kiwanis Park basketball court, is that Carson's court or Kiwanis?
So one thing I forgot to put on twenty twenty-two is we did budget additional funding for that fence, uh, sixty-five thousand. Um, so we're kind of doing a, let's see how it goes. And we had this discussion on, uh.
Going this way.
Yeah. Yeah. Good to know. Um, and so if, if we don't add more fencing, that I want to bring ideas back to Park Board, but also share it with, yes, it's the Stevens Park. I mean, I want to have an open discussion on what to spend that remaining money on. And that could be the, that could be if we're able to do it in-house or, or add another amenity at that park that we're not thinking about.
The top five I listed, I'll put a mini picture there. It comes with its own. Thanks. It's a very pleasant question.
Anything further? All right. Thank you so much to all of you who presented this evening. Uh, we are at Miss Lenee's business. Mr. Williams.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
I want to take the time to talk.
Uh, the only thing I have is, uh, enjoy your week off with no meeting next week, but we will have a very full agenda and executive session. Unfortunately, with the, uh, illness of our legal counsel, we haven't been able to have the executive session these last two meetings. So there, there, it will be a long night on this night.
Bring a sandwich.
Any further, uh, anything for our staff?
Uh, we're, uh, just a heads up, we're interviewing our CEB director candidates all day tomorrow, starting at like seven thirty in the morning, about four thirty at night. So it's this week, next week, we're interviewing, uh, two different days, I mean, it's Wednesday, Thursday, we're interviewing, uh, the public works, the director candidates.
Might not music can?
Yeah, I think so.
You're coming back, kid.
They can see I'm the coolest department. We're working hard.
Yeah. Then I'll find out that you can get it.
And the engineer as well. So next week is the engineer as well, a couple of works ready. So I expect if you're bringing things forward under twenty-six.
Any helpful comment? Hearing none. Uh, we don't have executive session. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Catch that. Is that unclear? Mr. Smith and second in by one. All in favor?